Get YouTube going will be good to go here.
Looks like it's live on my screen. Okay.
You're good to go.
Counselor Camera, are you with us? I'm gonna start the meeting. There you go.
Hi Hank.
Nice to see you. There we go. Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the March 1st. I can't believe it already in 2021. This is a city council work session. I'd like to call the meeting to order and I'd like to start with the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Great, thank you. And clerk, could you please call the roll call?
Here.
Counselor Galanese.
Here.
Counselor Burl.
Here.
Counselor Peeler.
Here.
Counselor Regan.
Here.
Counselor Camera.
Here.
Counselor Salamendra.
Here.
Counselor Pruitt.
Present.
Mayor Valentino.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're gonna start with our Ontario County Supervisors. We have three of them that have been invited and I just want to thank you for cutting time out of your busy schedules to attend with us tonight. The goal is just kind of a meet and greet. That's what we're planning on doing. We have Supervisor Don Vedora, Supervisor Lou Gard, and I see Supervisor Greg Bendelitz signing on right now. So the goal tonight is really, you know, geez, I've been on council, this is my 18th, going on 19th year. And having a relationship usually was on a reporting basis with county supervisors. The goal, I think, from our council as we continue to talk about how we can work not only with our county supervisors, but with surrounding municipalities, is just to get a good feel for where everybody's at and what their responsibilities and duties are. And so tonight, the meet and greet, I'd just like to go around and have the opportunity in a non-reporting type of atmosphere, just in a casual atmosphere to talk about what your role is on the supervisory board and maybe what are your subcommittees you might be on and kind of what you guys are up to and what you're into. So I'm gonna start with Dom. I think you've been on the board longer than anybody and then we'll go with Greg and then we'll go with Lou.
Actually Greg and I on the same time.
Greg, alright. So you guys can.
Anyways, I gave Laura, Lori, did you get my email? Could you post that? Could you post that?
If it's a political ad.
It's not political.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
I will share right now Dom's talk.
I wrote down all the committees I'm on and the committees, each committee has several things they're responsible for. So I thought it'd be easier, just if you guys wanted to read it, you want a hard copy, I can email it to you. These are just my committees. I mean, like Greg is on, also on Government Ops, but. So anyways, I'm on Government Ops. You want to read that and it shows you all the different responsibilities Government Ops has. It's Government Operations and Insurance. We shortened it by saying Government Ops.
Good info.
Dom, I think what would be helpful for us, you know, as we're listening, is, you know, how long have you been on the Board of Supervisors and just, you know, a short, brief, you know, when you talk about being on these committees, I'm curious, you know, how many times a month do you meet and kind of how it works?
Yeah, well, you wanted to know what committees, I saw that in your email, so I wrote them all down. Also, you wanted to know their responsibilities. So everybody, we all, all the committees meet every third week, okay? The Board of Supervisors meets every third week, not the third week of the month, the third week. So if you met tonight, you count one, two, three, and there's a meeting. And then one, two, three is a meeting. So in six weeks, Board of Supervisors meets twice and all these other committees also would meet twice. It's, we're on a three-week schedule. Every, it's, it's, all the committees meet every third week. So basically, it's, we meet every week. So like, in a six-week period, we gotta meet every week. There's a couple extra I'm on that the last two, the regulatory compliance in the succession planning, they don't meet every third week. They meet maybe once a month or sometimes once every couple of months. But the Public Works and the Government Ops is what they call Standing Committee. And there's other Standing Committees and you'll hear about them from Lou and Greg. They're on some other ones. So it's every third week, basically. And, and the meetings are open. So you guys, if anybody wants to attend, I know you guys, the city councils send liaisons to all their other boards and stuff. You want to take, there's 90s, you want to take turns coming to some of these meetings, you know, all the meetings are open.
Dom, is there a reporter, like the messenger or somebody that reports on what goes on at these meetings? Unlike, it seems like the council is always in the news, but I don't hear much about what goes on at, you know, at the county level.
Well, the reporter comes to the Board of Supervisors meetings most of the time, not all the time. Sometimes there's a Canadega reporter there, sometimes a Geneva, and sometimes both. But not all the time. If there's something going on, something controversial, yeah, they're there. As far as the committee meetings, they don't usually come unless they know there's some controversial item that we're gonna be talking about, then they show up. But normally, they don't come to the individual committee meetings. But many times, see, if you don't see, there was an article in last week, or the last meeting, Canadega Messenger was there, but Geneva wasn't. I don't know why, but, you know, sometimes one goes, sometimes the other, and sometimes both, but.
Are you posting those meetings on YouTube or anything like that?
No, but they're, all the meetings scheduled and everything is on our website, so.
There's a link you can follow, John. So if you go to the meeting agenda, it's right at the top of the, I don't, I don't think it's on YouTube, but you can.
No, it's not on YouTube, but they post when all the meetings are. And the, the individual committees, they're during the day, somewhere in the afternoon, and one or two in the morning. Like we had a Public Works meeting today at three. So that was online, it was Zoom or WebEx, we use WebEx, we don't use Zoom. But you can go, there are a point now where you can go in person or on Zoom, whichever one you choose. People are still uncomfortable because of the COVID or if they're busy or whatever and they can't get there. They can, they can go on Zoom, but for a year now, even, we've been on WebEx.
Do you fellows get to choose your, your committees or assignments or?
No, no. The chairman, every year, appoints people to the committees. He might, he might reappoint you to the same committee or he might move you around to a different one. It's all up to the chairman. I suppose you could request it, but I don't know if he would. I don't know. He decides.
Okay.
But he, but he like tunes into a lot of meetings and stuff. If he doesn't come, he's online and he's watching what's going on and listening to what's going on. Sometimes he has something to add to a meeting.
So.
Chairman of the committees, you'll usually ask him at the end, Mr. Chairman, do you have anything you want to add? And he might add something or not.
I want to make sure I understand you. So in other words, everybody could have all of their positions changed every year. Everybody could, it's like musical chairs, I guess. There's not a lot.
Well, I suppose, I suppose you could, but he doesn't do that. He doesn't move everybody every year. But he could, I guess, if he wanted to. Like I've been on the same committees now for the last, I don't know, three years or something, but before that, I was on a couple other ones. But he, he doesn't just move them. Sometimes maybe he is, people are requesting, I don't know. I haven't asked them, but. I just go where he tells me to go.
A good soldier.
Because I like to learn about what's going on. A lot of times I go to other committee meetings that I'm not on, but I might just go just to see what's going on there, you know? I mean, there's minutes of all the meetings also, all the meetings. Just, you don't hear all the discussions unless you go.
How about you Supervisor Bendelitz? Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Alright, good. I want to make sure it's clear. So maybe I can go over that again and maybe cover that a little, a little more thoroughly. But, so we're on a three-week meeting cycle for both our committee meetings and our Board of Supervisor meetings. So if you had committees this week, the following week, you would have a regular board meeting. The following week, there would be no scheduled meetings, but those are the weeks where resolutions are being developed and adopted or, or gone over. And it's a week to basically get new information and new topics to the board so that we can do resolutions for the next committee meeting so that they can be reviewed. So those committees are, again, every three-week cycle along with the board meeting is every three-week cycle. All of the meetings are open meetings in accordance with the open meetings laws and regulations. If you go to our Ontario County Board of Supervisors website, you can go to the minutes of the previous meetings and the upcoming meetings and resolutions. It'll give you the links. And you can go to WebEx and you can view every meeting if you wish to, whether it be a committee meeting or a Board of Supervisor meeting. They're all open meetings and the Board of Supervisors meetings also has room for public comment and privilege of the floor through the supervisors. So that's how that's normally done. Our committee selection generally is based on your prior experience and background and what your expertise is and what you bring to the board. So, you know, initially, we had 10 committees and a few years ago, we consolidated those into six standing committees. And I was the chairman for the Government Operations Committee at that time, that year when we did that. It took most of the year to do it and what we looked at was consolidating some overlapping committees. And what that did was it added some extra people to each committee, but it also allowed more people to hear more information from those committees instead of having to hear it three or four times throughout the committee cycle. So if you were on three separate committees, you may hear updates from the county administrator, chairman of the board, or certain other legal issues going on three separate times. This way, you only hear it twice, but with more people on those six committees and they're combined, more people get to hear more information on a regular basis. So it's just, it's helpful all the way around. It's a little more efficient and it's worked very well. So we went ahead and adopted that, that year, and that was probably about five years ago, six years ago, and that's how we did that consolidation. So Government Operations was originally Government Operations and Improved Methods, which was the original title, but it was combined with Government Operations and the Insurance Committee. So now it's Government Ops and Insurance. And because there's so much overlap between the regular Government Operations and the insurance with regard to our self-insurance plan through the county, workman's comp, a lot of those other items, legal issues and lawsuits, that's all handled under Government Operations. There was no sense having two committees hearing the exact same information within a week. And that's an example of why those committees were combined and there was a few others. Initially, I was on Human Services Committee. I'm still on Public Safety, where I'm the vice chair, and Government Operations, where I was the vice chair for the last, I believe, three or four years and chairman prior to that. So that's how the committee assignments are done. And then there are special committees, which you can be appointed to, again, based on your expertise. So a quick example, this year alone, this year, past year 2020, I was on three separate special committees, which were, two of those were bylaw committees. We had to separate Stop DWI from Traffic Safety Committee. There's different funding streams and some of that can't mix. So we separated those. And part of that committee's operation was to determine who is on those committees and then rewrite the bylaws that strictly govern those committees. And then in addition, as you know, I was on the County Administrator's Search Committee. I was the chair for that. So we established the rules and the procedures for the interviews and the backgrounds on the candidates. And we continued to do the first and second interviews and then had the final determination on who was to be hired based on the, the pool of candidates that we had. So all of those special committees, again, you're appointed to those based on your prior experience. And because I did interviews, backgrounds, background investigations and internal investigations, I got assigned to committees such as those, as an example. So that's normally how those committee assignments go. And what most people don't realize is, all those extra special committees, which probably added another, probably at least another 20 meetings to my usual annual cycle, are done at our own expense. We don't get extra money for those committees. So those of us that wish to participate on those committees and be part of those, we do those because that's what we wish to do and we're excited to be part of that, but we get no extra compensation for that. Other, you know, that we, we get paid for our general duties, everything else we do on our own, just simply because we wish to do it. So, and if anybody has any questions or comments or any ideas of what goes on and what we've done in the past, I know I'm on LinkedIn, so if anybody has LinkedIn, you can go to LinkedIn and look at my profile and my background. And it explains a lot of those committees I've been on throughout the last eight years. This is my eighth year, beginning of my eighth year on Board of Supervisors. So I hope that answers some of the questions and maybe Lou can point out anything that I missed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's been pretty comprehensive up to this point, so I'll just add some of my personal stuff. I am also on Public Safety along with Greg, the Public Safety Committee, as well as the Planning and Environmental Quality Committee, PEQ. So that's the, the landfill committee as well. And I do not have any special assignments. I sadly cannot report on any special assignments at the moment, but I was asked by Mayor Valentino to help serve on the Police Collaborative this year. So I've been, have enjoyed my time, you know, integrating with the city government in that respect and just try to keep, keep an open door, an open phone line to you folks. I know Ken and Councilman Burl will often hit me up, so I would welcome anybody else that, that wants to talk about city issues or city-county issues. I'm happy to have those conversations and, yeah, that's it. Glad my dogs aren't barking right now.
Counselor Brooke.
I'm curious, would you folks consider there to be any territorialism? I mean, you're, you're covering the whole county. It opens up a couple of questions for me, like, if you're voting on something, how do you know what the people in Naples really want? You don't really have access to communicating with them. And then also, I mean, you know, there's some folks from Canadega or Geneva or Vekpikka. Do people sort of fend for their, for their territorial locations or do you have to look at it a different way?
No, I, I think, I think maybe to give a better understanding, the Board of Supervisors is a governmental body, a legislative body, responsible for running the county government. We are elected officials for our districts or towns within our county. However, we are representative of the county government and those people within our districts. So the city of Geneva, city of Canadega are, are unique in that the supervisors don't take part in running the city. The cities fall under a different set of laws. They're, they're a separate self-governing entity. What we do is deal with things that city-county that are mutual things, sales tax distribution, shared services, tourism, anything at the county level that we can do to help those people that are in our districts. But when we're voting on something, whether it be from Naples or Gorum or wherever it may be, those are county issues that are relative to the entire county. And they're things that we have resolutions that we review and we have emails or phone conversations between those town supervisors and ourselves so that we are apprised of what goes on before we go to a vote. At each one of our committee meetings, not only do we have the chairman of the board, but we have the county administrator or deputy administrator at every committee meeting, and we have the county attorney or one of their delegates at every meeting. So every time we have a committee meeting, any questions or concerns that come up are clarified, not only through other people on the committee and people in those townships that are on that committee, through the board chair, the county administrator, or our legal counsel through the county. So we have a pretty good, well-rounded idea of what's going on with each of those resolutions, whether it be Geneva, Naples, Richmond, or wherever that may be, if that helps clarify that for you.
Can I just add that we also have staff members from each department that attend the committee meetings too. So if you have questions, sometimes the staff members can answer the questions too.
How do they assign how many, you know, supervisors there are? Does it go by population? Like, we're roughly 11 or 12% of the county. Does that mean we have 11 or 12% of the county?
No, our, our votes are weighted. We have a weighted vote process based on population. And you can go to our website and it'll show you each supervisor, their district, and then the weighted vote for each supervisor on a vote when we do a call to vote. And you're voting individually and how those weighted votes affect any particular resolution that's voted on. So everything you need to know about that is on the website for the County Board of Supervisors.
Thanks, Greg. So, so when the committees get together, you, you don't vote to make a decision. You gather information and then bring it back to the board every three weeks and then the entire Board of Supervisors votes on an issue?
Basically, the people on those particular committees are there because of their background and expertise. When an issue comes up or a resolution comes up, it's vetted in the committees. And if there's any questions, any supervisor from any committee can ask questions. They know what resolutions are coming to the floor. That is a place where we, we vet everything. We make the arguments, we have the discussions. And then just because a resolution comes to the committee, doesn't mean that's the way it gets to the main Board of Supervisors. We may make the changes and tweak it and make any adjustments that are beneficial to everybody. And then it goes to the entire floor and then we have a vote by everybody. But it's vetted in those committees because those are the people that are there based on their expertise and they are able to do the initial evaluation of those resolutions or issues. And then they have input from every, every other supervisor as well.
Yeah, I just, because two of the six committees don't have a supervisor from Geneva, Health and Human Services and Ways and Means. So I'm, I just have the county website up here. So, so that makes me feel good. So we're not prejudiced in any way because you're still voting on what comes up through those committees.
Yes. We, we see all those resolutions. We have email and phone conversations and personal conversations with all the people that are on those committees. There's a lot of back and forth and that's why we do the committee system because that way it is more effective. There's a lot of conversation. It, it, it forces conversation and dialogue between people. And that's how we, we get all the details and information and insight from other people, you know, from outside sources, not just those people on the committee. So it seems to be a very well-rounded process and it's been extremely effective.
But the committee, the committee does, as Greg said, they vet everything. The committee, each committee votes what they think, but it's basically a recommendation because the final decision is up to the Board of Supervisors.
Counselor Salamandra.
I'm hearing how you vote when there's resolutions on the floor, but I'm interested particularly in what you three are bringing to the floor or plan to bring this year in order to better fight for Geneva. Like, what are your goals as county supervisors?
What we bring to the table. Well, we, we, first of all, we're in contact with people in our districts, our wards. We're in contact with, with the council. I mean, not all the council, but I see counselors here and there and, and discuss. What we try to do is, anything we think is gonna help the city or anything you guys think is gonna help the city, we'll bring it to the floor. But, you know, we don't, we're not sitting in your meetings. We don't get involved in, you know, your discussions. So you have to tell us what you want. Of course, I'm always fighting the landfill. I mean, I don't care, I'd fight that till I die, but, but with other things, you know, we, well, you talked about shared services. Well, we have lots of shared services and I'm, I'm researching it now. We, I'm gonna give you a list of all the shared services and hours we spend and money we spend to help the city. When you see city-county trucks here and county workers here, you know, there's a lot of different things we do for, not just Geneva, but try to help all the cities until there's only two cities. We try to help the towns too. I, I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Yeah, it's good. Thanks.
I would add to that a little bit. One of the things that I learned early on that I maybe wasn't as aware of is that the, the county level seems to be less, we have sort of less original jurisdiction, if you will, to legislate proactively for things than other levels of government. So city council, you have your home rule charter authority and you, you guys, you all can make law, right? And the state legislature can make law. Well, we, we make law, but it tends to be fairly narrow in terms of what you can actually do in a proactive sense. That's been my experience with it. So I try to approach my role in a very oversight-driven fashion and in a fashion that can facilitate positive change for people in Geneva and my wards and in, you know, in the interest of things that you all put on our radar screen. So, you know, every vote, asking myself, kind of, how, how do I just, how do I feel about this personally? Is this something that I think people are okay with or not? And just bringing it back, I'm stealing from Dom Vedora, but bringing it back home, I've heard him say this before, you know, how, how would this sort of feel at the kitchen table? So a lot of it is kind of that oversight role, but then there are these other one-off issues. Like recently, we learned that the county actually has jurisdiction to regulate the fees that food service delivery organizations were charging back to restaurants and, and small businesses. So at our most recent meeting, we voted on a resolution that would give the county, the chair of our board, Jack Maron, authority to sign an executive order which would limit the fees that Grubhub and these other sorts of companies can charge to our local restaurants because those fees, some of the research that was done indicated that those fees were approaching usury, you know, like the worst credit card you've ever seen, those kind of level of fees. So passed that resolution and, which was kind of two-pronged. One, one part of it saying that the chair should have the, that the chair should sign this executive order. And then the, the second prong being that we should take it through an actual lawmaking process with public comment and so on and so forth. So that's moving forward and that's something that I was able to bring forward with Supervisor Baker and the support of others, who's from Canadega who, you know, his restaurants had reached out to him with concerns about these fees. So, you know, there are things you can be proactive about, but I find that there are fewer opportunities for that than maybe I would have thought at first. But certainly, the ability to always keep your finger on the pulse, ask yourself what's, what's gonna be helpful for people? How can you facilitate positive public policy for your, your local community? That's kind of how I approach it.
That was helpful though. Thank you.
So, and then also, I think we need to go back and people need to realize, the county government doesn't dictate to the cities. Cities are their own separate political entity. We don't tell them what to do. We don't dictate to them. We don't tell them you should be doing this. We're there to run the county government. And as a result of running the county government, the city, like every municipality, gets money and opportunities and services from all those county agencies. So if the city needs a specific concern, you know, a want or there's a concern, they need to bring that to the county so that we can see where or if we can do anything to assist and where that money is coming from in order to do those things. So I think there's a misconception where people think, well, the city's the city and the county's bigger than the city, so the city, the county can, can do for us. No, the city is its own separate entity. You govern yourself. We at the county take care of county government, which in turn is helpful to the cities, especially in regards to shared services. You know, a lot of the resolutions we pass with regard to funding for training, grants, things that are available to every municipality are done at the county level. And then the other, every other level is able to, to tap into that and, and benefit from that, whether it be tourism, shared services, some of the other billing services that we do for school taxes, property taxes, all the other things that we do are there. We don't do that unless we're asked. We don't go to a municipality and tell them that they're gonna do something a certain way. So I think people don't understand that when they, when they're constantly saying, well, what is the county gonna do for us? Well, from a city position, you're, you're your own, you know, your own basket of eggs. You do your own thing. If you need something from us, we're there and we're happy to do that. But also understand that out of a $225 million operating budget, you know, we have less than 10% discretionary spending. Much of what we deal with, especially with human services and social services, is state mandated. So it's not like we have, you know, 50.2% of your county budget is the social services. Most people don't realize that. Most people don't realize that. And the rest of that budget goes to operate everything else that takes 800 employees to run that county. So, I think, you know, what we want to do for the city, we do things every cycle for the city and every other municipality. But if there's a specific ask, that needs to come to us so that we know what you're looking for and we can see where that fits and what we can do to help, if that helps that.
I've got a bunch of hands raised. So, I see Council Regan, Council Galanese, Council Cameron, Council Peeler. If you guys want to go around the horn. Council Regan?
Thank you. Lou, you just reminded me of one, and we've talked about this at the city level too, but any research I've done has landed it back to the county and that's Airbnb and whether, whether we're allowed to accept or take in, you know, occupancy tax from them as a city. I'm sure it'll be shared with the county, but is that something you can just address quickly for me?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd be happy to because it's something that I, I think I, that I support. And our board passed the necessary resolution in order to make that happen about a year ago and it needed support at the state level from a state legislate, legislator in order to sponsor whatever magical thing they needed to sponsor at that level to allow us to do that and, and our folks did not sponsor that for us. So, there is an effort. I've also been, I've worked in conversations with Supervisor Baker, who's chairs Ways and Means on how to potentially rev, well, how to revisit that because I think it's something that's important. I've had people approach, people who own Airbnbs approach me about it oddly enough. So...
Thank you. Yeah.
Council Galanese?
Okay, I got, I got three questions, but I'll start with one that I talked to Dom about a couple of days ago that I'd like to put on all three of your laps. And that is with the current, what is the current status, do you know, of our DMV in downtown Geneva? And I know that it is closed, but are you fighting or can you fight and will you fight to make sure that it stays here in our city? Because I think it's very beneficial to us having it here. It's another service that's provided by the state actually, but it, I believe that it's run somewhat in hands with the county because you have to be from that specific county to go to the DMV within the county. You can't go from, if you live in Geneva, you can't go into Seneca County to use their DMV. They won't allow it. So, it's beneficial to us to have that and it also is a drawing from people that are close by Geneva, that come into Geneva to do whatever DMV work that they need to have done and they could, you know, possibly put them in Parkers or in one of the local businesses downtown. So, it does help us there too. And I want to know your feelings on, on that and moving forward, what can you do to help us?
Well, I think that, I think that a lot of the, the issues currently with DMV downtown Geneva is, is COVID-related. I mean, a lot of that is workforce reduction and some other issues related to COVID, but I think we, we don't want to lose DMV in downtown Geneva. We want that here. It's a convenience. You know, we have a, a large population in this end of the county that can utilize that. And a lot of the reasons why you can't go to other counties currently are current COVID regulations because nothing normally would stop you from going to Seneca County to go to use their DMV. But right now, that's the way things are set up with regard to rules and regulations and some other issues with regard to COVID and county policy that's also dictated by the state. So, there's, there's a lot of overlapping things there, but in terms of, of supporting it, of course, we support it. I think it's, it's, it's necessary to have it here. There's no reason not to and we certainly utilize it and it's, it's, it's extremely beneficial to everybody here.
Yeah. Dom, one, one second. I just want to go off of something that Greg said, so it doesn't get lost here, is I do feel that it's essential to have in Geneva just for the simple fact that you mentioned. We don't want people going into Seneca County. So, Seneca County gets the sales tax from what we could be having with the office here and also it eliminates the, the thought of going online because when you go online, that sales tax goes to wherever the billing is for that particular...
It's, it's not just the sales tax, but it's actually the fees. If you do something online and you're paying X amount of dollars for a registration, it, it all goes to the state. When you do it at the county level, within your county, a portion of that goes to the county. So, it's nice to have because it's, it's, it's a revenue generating office. It generates revenue. It's a revenue stream. We don't want to get rid of that by any means. And certainly, once COVID is, 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 is going by the wayside and we get over this, this entire pandemic, you know, you, you're going to see that that is going to remain and go back to the usual business, just like, you know, every other DMV hopefully goes back to its usual way of doing business and, and we're going to want to keep that money here. And I tell people, if you're going to do things with DMV, I encourage you to go in person and do it because a portion of that stays in the county. If you do it by mail or online, it goes to the state. We see none of it. And even though it comes from our county, the state's not giving us our money back. So, it's, it's, I urge people to use those local DMVs because it keeps the, more of the money here, some of the money here.
So, is it safe to say that you can count on the three of you to keep your finger on the temperature of this situation? Because I heard from some county, some people in the county that it's not coming back here. And, you know, that's why my concern is bringing this issue up like I am.
All right, Frank. You talked to me, I looked into it more and what you've all said is, is correct. And what I told you that night was people are not using it, as Greg said. We're, we're losing money, okay? We're losing money because people aren't using it. However, we've been keeping it open, but the COVID, as Greg said, that's a problem because if you, if you've been in there, and I assume you have, it's awful small. You can't social distance. There's no waiting room area. I mean, come on. And, and even the workers, there's no room in there. It's way too small for that, okay? So, it's going to be closed probably most of the year. And then the DMV, the, the county DMV is going to be having discussions with the Board of Supervisors because they're not making any money because people are going online. It's more convenient to go online and that's what I told you that night. You know, they, they don't want to go down there.
If I could just jump in for a minute?
On your computer and renew your license and renew your registration and everything online. So, we have to get people to use it. Right now, it's the COVID thing, they can't social distance at all.
So, let me jump in just for a minute. Council Galanese, I know you've got two other issues there and there's a couple of other councils I'd like to speak. This, this is more of a, a meet and greet. You know, if we want to dig into specific issues, I'm going to suggest that we, we allot a new, another meeting to kind of dig into a lot of those specific issues. This is more to find, to start building that relationship so in the future means we can talk about specific issues. So, I really don't want to dig too deep into the specific issues tonight. I'm going to let you finish.
Well, I, I can, nothing else is really, that was very a serious concern of mine.
Understandable.
Just one more thing, as Greg said, the three of us, we want what's best for Geneva. If it's going to help Geneva, we're going to try to fight to keep it. We're not going to get rid of it that easy. We're going to fight to try and keep it. But if it's losing money, we might be outvoted, is what I'm telling you. I'll say, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No problem. Council Cameron?
Yes, um, thanks gentlemen for coming and spending some time with us. I, I specifically have an issue and I want to go back. It's the one that Dom says he's always, you know, it's the landfill and I want to just pose some questions to you for, you know, your analysis later or whenever, but I just, you know, will, will the landfill close in 2025? And, you know, I, I assume that the county, being the owner of the, of the operation is, is still going to stay in charge and still has the mind to close it. But that means how do we, you know, how are plans coming for the post-closure, you know, operation and how citizens of the county and maybe the four county area are going to dispose of their garbage? We went back to the old model when the landfill was sort of like a four county area landfill. But then, you know, and I just wondered how much are, I mean, I think the counties, I, I wonder how much the county has, as a, as a governmental entity is engaged with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and their solid waste division specifically? Have you or any of the administrators had specific, let's say, agitated conversations with David Vitale, who's the division director and a man who's responsible for producing the next beyond, beyond waste plan because the county, the, the state's trying to, you know, gravitate away from these, trying to come up with something as an alternative to mega landfills. So, it's, this is going to be a very challenging...
Ken, let me, let me kind of...
So, I'm making it easy. I'm hoping you're all engaged.
Yeah, well...
With the state on the solid waste matter.
If you check with the last Board of Supervisors meeting, we had a report from Carla, who's in charge of that through planning, and she did a full report on what we've been doing and it's a, a one-year, five-year, 10-year, multi-year plan and it's there for everybody to see. It's, it's in black and white. It's on the website. It's part of the plan and it's something we've been working on for the last five years. We're not just going to wait till the last day that the landfill is open and then decide how we're going to make up for three and a half million dollars of revenue.
I wasn't suggesting that. I didn't know the plan.
But that report touches on and, and addresses everything you just asked. And I've said this multiple times at, at meetings in the past to the board members or the council members is if you have a specific concern, let us know. We'll put you in touch with the people in charge up there and you can come up there, sit down and they will go over all that with you in detail because it seems like when we say something at a city council meeting, nobody believes us. And that's why I was saying...
When was that made available?
The last Board of Supervisors meeting was part of the open meetings. It was all part of the agenda. And if you'd like, I'd be happy to forward it to you so that you know you have it.
Why don't you forward it to the whole council?
Well, yeah, I can do that too. But what I'm saying is it's available on our website. It's there for everybody to see.
I did not know that it had been recently posted.
Okay, but my, my point is this is something we've been doing for the last five years. It's an ongoing process.
I wasn't suggesting, I wasn't suggesting that you didn't.
I know that. I'm just trying to give you the...
I wanted a status as well. And, and the thing is, is that right now, I'm asking about the engagement with the beyond, beyond waste thing because the draft is coming out in the next two, well, it's supposed to be out, but it's, it's taking some time, but it's going to be critical that all of us engage in that because we have to do the final reading before they finalize it.
This is why, and this is why I've suggested multiple times that all city council members who are concerned, set down a, a series of questions, let us know. We can make an arrangement for you to come up and meet directly with everybody who can give you all the answers. They're the ones that are doing this. They're the ones who are in charge of making the policy, looking at what we're doing in the future and what we're doing currently. I've invited everybody multiple times. I don't think anybody from city council has ever come to me or Dominic or Lou or any prior supervisor to make those arrangements, to come up and sit down and have everything laid out for you as, as openly and, and, you know, and honestly, as can be done and you can get those questions answered. That material is there. And like I said, that last meeting, we had a very nice update report from Carla specifically stating and addressing a lot of the things that you're concerned about. And I think that if you look at that, I think you get a really good idea of where we're at, what we've been doing and where we're going moving forward to the, to that landfill closure. So...
I've never been invited to do that.
Order, order.
Okay, well, every time I've spoken in the past when people have concerns at city council about the landfill or anything, I've always invited them to contact me and we can put you in touch with anybody in charge of any department and you can have any type of meeting with them you like and they'd be happy to answer any questions on any specific topics.
Thank you. I'm going to move to Council Peeler, please, and then we'll wrap it up.
For taking some time for us tonight, gentlemen. And my question is kind of broad and sweeping, so I think that's what we're going to, we're trying to focus on tonight. And one of the challenges that we have here in Geneva, and you guys must all know because you're all, you know, Geneva guys, so that, and that is economic development in our economy and kind of the, what, what is our niche market, right? What is our, what is our unique experience and does it boil down to a few things or a bunch of things? And you guys see and hear things at the county level that we don't necessarily get from a regular, on a regular basis. So, if you could kind of speak to your vision for Geneva and possibly some strengths that we can capitalize on, and I'm not saying about new things that we can do, but what are existing things and economic pressures that you're hearing about within Geneva and the county that Geneva can better tap into? And where's, where is your vision for Geneva's economy in the next, you know, five, five to 10 years? Thank you.
Well, I'll start out real quick without taking up too much time, but I think obviously we need to exploit the things that we have here. We have a beautiful lakefront. We have the tourism. You know, we have some old housing stock that I think we need to see what we can, can do things with, but that's at the city level. You know, I think most, most importantly, we need to look at jobs. I mean, you know, COVID, the pandemic has really damaged everybody in terms of jobs and businesses and that's hard. It's a hard situation, but looking at the big picture, you know, again, you know, our economic development people, you know, our IDC people, we're there, but the city is its own governing entity. And I guess the question is, the county is willing to help the city with anything. What is the city looking at and what does the city see as a future for the city job-wise, industry, industry-wise, housing-wise? What does the city have as a vision and what do you wish to do? Because I think, again, we don't dictate to the cities what you're going to do and we don't say, hey, you should be doing this. We're there to assist in any way possible where we can when the municipality comes to us and says, here's a plan, can you work with us on this?
Thank you. You're not hearing that now loud and clear?
What'd you say?
And you're not hearing that now loud and clear? Is that one of the challenges? Like, you'd love to hear some ideas at a county level?
The ideas are great. We'd love to hear ideas. I, I have no problem listening to ideas and putting people in touch with the right people to show you how those things can, can come to fruition. You know, that's, but again, remember, you're a city, you're a sep, you're a separate self-governing entity. We don't dictate to you. We're there to help you. And I think that's always been a misconception with the way some people look at the county government in relation to the city governments.
Okay, so Greg, you just maybe noodle this idea and that is to help us as we go forward, we're going to be putting some, some kind of a, let's say, an idea together about moving the railroad, which would...
Ken, can I have everyone else answer the question before you jump in on this?
Okay. And I think, so just wait, timeout. And Mr. Council Peeler, you're going to, you're going to continue and get input. But I think there's a lot of information that is going on with economic development in the county and I would ask the city manager when she gets a chance to be able to let us know about that, but I don't want to interrupt any answers from Supervisor Guard or Supervisor Vedora.
Thank you.
Okay. As Greg said, we have a great economic development person, Mike Manikowski, he'll help you with anything, but economic development, but the city has to decide what they're going to do. I've, I've been saying for years and years and years, before I was a supervisor, jobs, jobs will solve all the problems and all the economic problems in Geneva. If you can bring in jobs, people will then move here, they'll buy houses here, they'll build houses here, their kids will go to school here, they'll shop here, you'll, you'll, your tax money will start flowing in. You got to find a way to bring in jobs. And when, you know, I don't know what hap, I don't know what the city is doing, but when places want to move here, for example, when Walgreens came, I heard they wanted to move into the city, okay? They couldn't cut a deal with the city, so they moved where they are now is actually in the town. And, you know, I, I don't know why I'm not involved in all their deals and stuff, but the city's got to find ways to bring businesses here. And I don't mean just small business, I mean bigger businesses that pays well. Look at my kids, none of them live here, except well, one lives there, he works for a bank. The banks have money, but the rest of them are all out of town because there's no jobs here. They go to college and then they move. And it's going to be the same with all your kids.
And it was, it's the same for everyone in my graduating class, Lou.
That's right. They move because there's no jobs. Jobs will solve the problem of economic development.
What do you think, Lou?
I think, you know, you're...
I think, you know, your original question was, was something along the lines of what is your vision of economic, economic future, right?
Right. And what's the kind of pulse that you're picking up on a county level for Geneva's economic future for what we can kind of?
Yeah. I actually, so two funny things. I actually think the counties like big picture economic development stuff is somewhat, is pretty congruent with what I think Geneva's ideal state future is and could be based on what our strengths are. I don't know that that's always communicated back to everybody. You know, my idea of of Geneva's future is kind of, if you go back to where we were prior to the start of the pandemic, where, you know, prior to all of our small restaurants and other small businesses getting squeezed to the point of almost non-existence or non-existence in some cases, taking that momentum and continuing to move it, move it forward and, and figuring out a way to throw gasoline on that somehow. And I think th- those industries are, you know, they're partly, it's agriculture and agrotourism. And to some extents like light manufacturing or sort of innovative startup businesses like reel eats that are tied to the agricultural, you know, base that we have in the area and our existing strengths. So, you know, I think it goes back to fostering those strengths that we have and continuing to build those out. Kind of lost my train of thought, but I think you get the idea of where I'm going. I don't know if that's.
No, I, I got it. And because that, because the kind of the vision and the mission is, is congruent. Can you kind of just touch on that overview of what the county's kind of economic focus is so that we can get a feel for that kind of congruence?
Yeah. I mean, I think reeats is a good example and, and the, you know, some of the county support that, that they've gotten. And, and it's funny because a lot of, a lot of what they talk about back in the good old days, pre pandemic, where conversations and meetings were kind of fun and upbeat. They're still fun and upbeat, but you know what I mean? It was a lot of like, well, here's all the great stuff that's happening in the restaurant scene in Naples. Or here's all the cool stuff that's happening over in the town of such and such. And I would always kind of have to be like, you know, we have a restaurant that's even better in Geneva, or we do it even better in Geneva. I always found myself being like, we're, you know, kind of pumping up the Geneva scene of things because I think, I think that they, I think that's what at the county level they're finding interesting as well from a economic development perspective. It may not have the huge dollar signs tied. It's not from a traditional economic development perspective, it's not as lucrative or beneficial as bringing some major factory to town or whatever, something like that. But I think that's, I think that's where they're heading and where they want to put their resources. So. And I would gently echo what some of the, what the other supervisors said in the sense that I do think there's an open door there on these questions and I'd like to help keep that door open. So, you know, by all means, my, my email phone are open all the time and happy to invite anybody to a county meeting or facilitate contact between the staffs in any way. And I mean, one example that has already started recently, Sage has pulled together, or somebody is awesome, has pulled together this little working group on some of the landfill issues. Bill, I know you were there and Jan was there and myself and Dom, I think. And we had some staff from the county to really drill down on the micro questions about how this is all being done. And I feel like there have been some productive follow-up from that. So.
Thank you. Thank, thank you.
You, you mentioned what county sees for Geneva. Well, the county not actually seeing anything for Geneva or anybody else. You've got to come up with some ideas, bring them to the county.
Yeah. I just misspoke. I, I meant you guys because you're residents, right? What, what do you see for Geneva based on the information that you've learned from your experience with the county? That's kind of what I was going for.
Well, as I said, to me it's jobs and it's not up to me. I can't tell you how to get the job. I don't know. Okay.
Yep. I'm not looking for.
You got to bring in businesses, but to help you do that, maybe a meeting with our economic development department, Mike Manikowski mainly, he might be able to give you some ideas. He's been doing this for most of his life. Okay. And maybe a little discussion with him on, on Zoom. He might give you some ideas and he would certainly help you along to bring in any businesses here that you might want to get.
I'd agree. Okay. I'd like to wrap this up. I, I kind of suggested a 30 to 40 minute forum of meet and greet. We're just shy of an hour and I just want to extend a sincere thank you to our county supervisors. I really appreciate you taking the time to be here and to give your input. It's valuable. I look forward to communicating further in the future, whether it's counselors independently with you or your groups or council as a whole. So thank you very much. We very much appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
Are you planning? Are you planning another one of these sooner?
Uh, not right away, but we will be planning one. You know, we, we have some things going on. We have some irons in the fire and we really want to tap into our resources at the county level also.
I just want to say it's a, right, this, this year is going to be kind of busy. As I said earlier, we go to a lot of meetings, but also we're all running for reelection this year. So it's adding more meetings is going to be a little bit harder. So.
No problem.
But as I said, 90 is can take turns in coming up there too at meetings. And if you have a specific thing, Bill's concern specifically about economic development, we can set up a meeting with with him and, and Mike Manikowski. They're, they're more than willing to help. County employees are very, very helpful.
We haven't heard him say no yet. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you.
Take care. Okay. So moving on in the agenda, I have a housing discussion by Councilor Salamandra.
Okay. We are facing a housing crisis here in Geneva and it's not all pandemic related. People in the city struggle to find adequate, safe, affordable housing that meets their needs. Tonight I would like to start to discuss how we as a council can begin to minimize and alleviate this crisis. I'd like to start by sharing with all of you some of the complaints that I hear. Even before the pandemic, renters complained of a segregated Geneva. They tell me about predatory landlords charging high rents for unlivable spaces. They show me pictures of horrible conditions and they ask for help. Often I try to find them new places, but depending on the time of year, rentals are extremely hard to find and even harder to get into. The pandemic has only intensified the crisis. The governor's moratorium on eviction has only put off the inevitable. Both renters and small landlords will be financially devastated. When running to represent the fifth ward, I made housing a big part of my platform because I believe that everyone deserves a safe place to live. But housing is more than that. This year at the retreat, this council chose their priorities. Beautification, finance and economic development. I would like to suggest here tonight that we address all of your goals by addressing housing. Stronger code enforcement and an organized effort by neighborhoods would certainly beautify the city. Infill development and home improvements increases our tax revenue and would give the finance committee more to work with. And finally, I would argue that economic development cannot and will not happen without first addressing housing. See Corning, New York, where Corning Inc. had to work with the city and I think spend 250,000 annually to ensure they have housing to recruit higher end jobs. If we want to attract people to Geneva, the city, not the town, we have to make it a place where folks want to live and stay. I hope we can brainstorm together tonight, but I do have some suggestions to start the conversation. One, change the Office of Developmental Services back to a fully functioning Office of Code Enforcement. Under Matt Horn's leadership, we saw enforcement of code become more relaxed. While I understand the city's willingness to work with small landlords who are trying to make improvements, the decision to go soft on code violations has become evident in our city and residents pay a price, whether it be inadequate housing for themselves or living next to inadequate housing. This is very attractive to out of town landlords and LLCs. Research tells us these properties, the ones owned by out of town LLCs are the most unsafe and require the most calls for service. I believe that strengthening code enforcement and having these cases heard by a court will result in more accountability. And more accountability will also build trust with property owners who are frustrated by the city's lack of action. Residents will begin to be able to trust that the investments they make into their own properties will see a return. We must change the climate in this city and create conditions that are uninviting for out of town LLCs and show them that we will not allow their predatory behavior and begin the shift to more owner occupied properties. Another suggestion is a rental registry like in Syracuse. A rental registry would force landlords to register their properties and get approval from the city in order to rent. This would ensure that each rental is up to code and meets basic minimum standards. It eliminates the problem of absent landlords because each property has a point of contact. And my final suggestion is that we use CDBG grants to fund home repair. In the past, we've used these funds for homeownership programs. I suggest that because banks are already offering low interest loans and fund matching programs that the city use this money to help folks who would be willing to buy in the city and do the necessary work to repair an old home, but are afraid to because of the cost. I believe that a program like this would result in more owner occupied properties and help beautify the city while removing some of the overwhelming barriers. We could use this in combination with a tool library like they use in Buffalo that reduces the cost of repairs. There are so many exciting ways for neighbors to help each other, but I believe it begins with initiative from the city. We will hear from the housing subgroup of the COVID-19 task force this Wednesday about more pandemic related, pandemic related concerns. So tonight I hope we can just have a short discussion that will focus on how we can address, address the lack of housing and the condition of the housing. These are just a few ideas and I hope we can go around the room so I can hear what yours are and come back with more concrete plans.
Oh, Council Preur, then I'm going to go.
I, I have, I guess a question and also a comment. First of all, the comment would be, I like that landlords renters registry. I think that'd be a good idea. I don't know if we'd have to put a resolution together or whatever, but that sounds like a real good move. But also I, I don't deny that there's a housing crisis. But I, I keep thinking back to when there were 17,000 people living in Geneva. And then, you know, when, when the depot was here and then it was 14,005 after they left and we have fewer now. So it, it is, is it not, it's not that there's not housing available. What is it? Just the quality of the housing that you're worried about? Or, or what is it that we're really looking at? Quantity or quality or, you know, both?
Yeah. Well, a lot of properties are in just terrible conditions. So it could have been that when more people lived here, they were not in such bad condition. And also the big houses that housed plenty of people are now split up into different apartments. And some out of town landlords hold buildings and don't rent to anyone because it works as like a tax write-off to, I, I don't really get how that works, what rich people do with their taxes, but they do it and it results in a lack of housing for us. And so like this week I have been looking on Craigslist and there's more housing than I've seen. But I, I check pretty regularly, weekly. I get a lot of calls and people are like some landlords I talked to, they say they have 40 people applying to for one apartment. And so it's bad. And I mean, maybe it gets easier if you have, have a lot of money and you have a really high credit score. But people I work with don't have either of those things.
So all those places that were rehabbed last year have all been like refilled again, huh? Courtyard apartments and places like that and garden street apartments, all of those are refilled again?
I, I'm not sure of the capacity of what's in there, but I know a bunch of people have just moved into courtyard. And getting into subsidized housing is very hard. So I, I, I can't tell you like maybe the housing authority or Val Meller could speak to the actual numbers. But how it plays out in real time is that people are on the, on waiting lists to get into subsidized.
Just on that point, John, from my own experience, from talking to them, it was a, you know, they just did a rolling renovation of the whole apartment complex. So it wasn't like there were, there were empty apartments there because they were in bad shape. And now they're being filled, but they were always full. And they just, people had to move out temporarily and they, they just moved through the whole project. And they're all very nice now, but I don't think it expanded the availability of housing.
And some people in courtyard apartments are paying up to, I think it used to be 1400. So we have to start to think like, a lot of people don't recognize that these rents are very high for what you're getting. So people, I know people who rent one room and it has bedbugs and they're paying eight or $900 a month.
Council Peeler, I see your hand, but I'm awkwardly raising my hand and answering my own hand if you don't mind first. So, and this is, this is something I actually had on my platform when I ran also, because I think there are major housing issues in the city of Geneva. You know, it's interesting because when we talk about housing, we talk about what we've done, geez, in 17 years or plus I've been on council. We've, we've tried different code enforcement leverages. We've also tried to implement the, the actually demolition of abandoned houses. We try not to take ownership of houses because that's, that's not the business the city is in. And I think throughout, throughout the last 10 years, we've at least demolished some of those rot, I'll call them rotten properties, abandoned properties that allowed the neighbors to actually have a little more of a yard. And I think that's been beneficial to improving housing stock in the city of Geneva. And, and you know, one thing that really gets me is, is when we have great businesses in the city of Geneva. And when the, the higher paid personnel in management end up living in Farmington or Victor. You know, I scratched my head saying Geneva's beautiful. We have a lot of good things going. Why do people do that? And a lot of the answers that come back are housing stock. So, you know, some of my ideas, and I, and I love the solar village, you know, I think that's, that's key to when we talk about sustainable housing in the future. If you can build houses that, that are net zero when it comes to energy and people don't have on top of their mortgage, they don't have to have a gas electric going on a monthly basis. That is huge. So there's, there's different tracks in the city of Geneva and we've been, we've been talking about them, that even this council has been talking about them. I'm near and dear to Idlewood Drive, which is close to me and behind me. There are tracks of land. There's a few tracks of land left. But the challenge with those tracks of land is developers won't come in because there isn't infrastructure. There isn't a road and electricity and water and sewer there readily available to, to build those houses. So one of my things that I've been pushing with Congressman Reed and Senator Homing is, is how do we get that funding to kickstart us? How do we, how do we get the road, the infrastructure so the city doesn't have to foot the bill and the developer doesn't have to foot the bill? But it kickstarts the housing in those undeveloped properties in the city of Geneva. So I appreciate where you're coming from. I think there are some avenues to go down.
What'd they say, Bear?
Right now they say that there are programs out there available, but everybody was so focused on COVID that nobody was going to give us the direct line to how we can access those funds. So I, I just, I'm going to keep beating on the door until somebody gives me somebody to talk to or a path to talk to, to get that answer. And, and I agree with, so the, the challenge with code enforcement. Oh. Are, are you all right, Jan?
Maybe she got a baby.
Council Regan, are you all right? Oh, okay.
Jan, are you okay?
I, I muted her for a second. I'll send her a text.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry. I didn't mute.
Okay. I hope she's okay.
I hope it's just the baby.
We're hoping the baby arrives.
It looks like it.
You're muted.
Okay. Well, that, that was, that was better than I thought it was from the scream. I was worried there for a minute.
Hey, I'd have a scream like that too if I had a baby.
Everything, everything's okay? All my family is around the computer wondering everything's okay.
I think it's a new grand, uh, first grand.
Oh, good, good, good.
Okay, good, good. Excellent, excellent. Yeah, the code enforcement issue is, is, is an age old challenge. And you know, what we did would, you know, it costs money for code enforcement and we went to a kind of a complaint based thing. But it is disappointing when, when you have residents that have to live in, in somebody's. I'm sorry, I'll use the word some, some of these slumlord situations. It's, it's not fair. And it's not fair to the good landlords who keep their properties up. So I agree with a lot of that. I'll, I'll quit talking, Council Peeler, and then Council Galanazie.
All right. I love problem solving and I think the topics that Laura brought up are fantastic.
All right, I love problem solving and I think the topics that Laura brought up are fantastic. And I want some clarity from her before I dive deeper into my, into this discussion. And I want to break it down into the problems that you've identified, Laura. And I, I think I've got a bearing on them. Because you presented a lot of solutions as well as those problems. So I want to get to the discussion of all the variety of solutions that we can look at. And one of the problems is code enforcement, correct? Yeah, and I think we've all, that we all know that that's a challenge. And we have code, we have violations that just aren't being enforced. And those affect not only home values, but its safety, right? And we've got, with fifty-two percent of, or fifty-one and a half percent of Geneva residents now being at the mercy of a property that they don't own. We expect those things to be fixed, right? Look, we all just nod, say that's common sense. You know, I rented for the, half of my professional career, I was a renter, so I get it. And housing stock, we want quality housing stock for, for home buyers, for single family home buyers, yeah. And then, low income housing is also a challenge. We need, we need more low income housing. So housing that might be, you'd have to technically qualify for because of your income status. Or just, just, it's not on the same caliber as a single family residence or something. Because I can't imagine that a low income housing and average housing stock can be lumped into the same category. Based on just the statistics of the vast difference in those home values, right? I mean, more or less. So, just to give everyone a snapshot of the region and what Geneva's looking at and our challenges. Currently, Geneva has a twenty point five percent poverty rate. That's very high, double, nearly double the rate of Canadega and Victor. And fifty percent higher than the surrounding townships. Geneva's average rent is eight hundred and thirty-three dollars per month as compared to rentcafe.com, which does a great job of tabulating average rents. And the average available space for a renter is a seven hundred square foot apartment. So that's, that's eight hundred and thirty-three is, you know, that's a number. And seven hundred square feet, that's a number. Now, Canadega, Canadega's average rent is twelve hundred and thirteen dollars per apartment. With an average apartment size of nearly a thousand square feet, one thousand seventy-five square feet. So fifty percent or twenty-five percent bigger. Victor, New York, has a hundred, one thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars a month. And eleven hundred square feet is the average rental space. So if we just look at the sheer costs of Geneva's rental space, it's sometimes forty percent lower than the surrounding regions. So we have a very, very low renting market, but we don't have good, we don't have as competitive as renting square footage.
Can I just respond quickly to that? Because what you're saying, okay, so yeah.
I'm not saying anything yet, I'm just putting numbers out.
Right, okay, but what I would like to say is that, that website is not revealing the, how the rents went up. So I think that rents have been on the rise in Geneva like thirty to forty percent in the last three years, but wages are not increasing. So an apartment that was here, even compared to the city, yes, rent will be cheaper in Geneva, but it's not affordable. There's a, I mean, comparing what people make in cities compared to what is being made here. I don't think that you can compare Geneva and Victor.
Well, we can, we can compare whatever we decide to compare as long as we have an even standard of comparisons, I think, I think.
I mean, I think more penyen would be appropriate where there's really no jobs.
We can look at anything, I'm more than happy to compare any type of community with any type of metric that we stand up against it. Because that's a valuable way to contrast communities and markets. So, I think if we're going to, if people can't find apartments in Geneva. And Geneva already has, and we have very, we have zero to no homeless rate in Geneva. I think it's less than, less than half of one percent or something low. And I don't, I don't, I don't think the homeless rate in Geneva is, was it half of one percent?
There's more homelessness in, I mean, whatever the rates say, there are housing insecure people living on couches, more than, more than that. I mean, we can, you can send these figures to me, but I, I don't want them to be like accepted as true without showing us where they're at. Like, I don't want people on this council to think that there's not a homelessness problem, there certainly is.
Sure, so citidata.com and rentcafe.com are great resources to look at census pool data. So this is all from the census and two thousand and ten census and two thousand and twenty census that we just finished up. And one of the things that I'd like us to discuss, none of this is, I have, none of this is opinionated. I'm just using statistics and we should try to rally around this data. One of the things is, is that if we're looking at a twenty percent poverty rate. And we're also looking at a demand for more low income housing. One of the things that we should be aware of just statistically is that attracting. The surrounding communities in Geneva have almost a fifty percent lower poverty rate. And they have much higher rates of renting. And I'm confused that the other communities in our surrounding region. Which are clearly where the people who are trying to get low income housing are coming from. Because this is not so much of an internal problem unless, unless our homeless rates are completely off the chains as far as. Like, if there's, if there's a hundred homeless families in Geneva, that would be completely counterintuitive to our actual data. And I will let, please, correct me if you have better information, but you know what I mean?
What I will do is reach, reach out to the Finger Lakes Housing Council that studies this and send you their numbers.
The Geneva Housing Authority right now has over four hundred applicants into Section Eight and the vast majority of them are from outside our community. So, and there's, and there's also rolling people within the system that are still, that are also trying to do Section, Section Eight qualifications for low income housing. And I understand there's challenges in getting Section Eight housing. And that's just based on the Geneva Housing Authority data that they release every month. But what I'm getting at is, is if poverty is a community effort, right? Solving the challenge of poverty, if we think that we need to be alone in solving that problem, I would, I'll challenge that all day and we don't. It should be a community effort. So I'm wondering why it's not a community effort in the communities that very, much more crisis oriented than us. Don't have options for their low income or poverty stricken residents. And the data to support that claim is clear. We have twenty, we have double the poverty rate than anyone in our surrounding region, except for maybe Lyons. And so, I don't understand why this isn't a community effort that all communities in the region are, are kind of coming together in a community consortium. Saying, how do we solve this? Because I don't know if we should be making Geneva more attractive for people with terrible credit scores. That's not going to improve the quality of our housing stock because they're not going to be able to afford that quality housing stock. There's going to be a inverse cultural occurrence. If we increase the housing stock, we're going to inherently decrease the number of residents that we have with poor credit scores. Because those houses are going to be harder to upkeep, harder to pay for. You're gonna, it's gonna demand higher incomes and it's gonna, and it's gonna, it's gonna demand, it's just gonna demand more income to keep those houses up. And I, I think we can be quite proud that for the last fifty years, Geneva has been the best community to go to if you're, if you're poverty stricken in this region, hands down. With the Geneva Housing Authority, with all of our low, with our low income housing options. We have fifty percent lower home values than Victor, than Canadega. If you want a fifteen hundred square foot home and you don't make more than forty-five thousand dollars a year, you could come to Geneva, you'll nail one down. All right, it's just, and that's, that's just, that's, so I don't, I don't want to disregard our, I don't want to disregard our successes. While focusing on just our challenges. Because Geneva right now, in the housing market, we're the best as far as our prices and our value per dollar, right? And that's the whole point of, I think what we're trying to do here is bring more value to those homeowners residents. Because that's what we're trying to increase and that's what we tried to increase when we enforced the stipulation on that home last March or last February. When we made, when we held them to their deed, when we held them to their, to their agreement that said you have to live there to get that house at that price. Because we're trying to economically reinforce single family homeownership and residency combined. So if the challenge is code enforcement, quality housing stock and better options for low income housing. What can we do for better low income housing options than twice as much as the surrounding communities?
I take issue with some of your statements, like that we don't want to bring people with bad credit scores here. I mean, people live here that have bad credit and they need a place to live. So, I mean, it doesn't seem like you're in good faith trying to solve the problem by throwing out all of those things.
I'm absolutely in good faith. I want to stop you right there because I am in good faith. I'm not trying to chase anyone out of Geneva. I'm just wondering why we're cultivating a space for more people with economic hardship to move in. Because it's also completely metrically true, it's objectively with empirical evidence. That people who come to Geneva don't necessarily get catapulted into prosperity. So we are doing them a disservice by bringing them here and then locking them into poverty.
I'm not sure that we bring them here. That was one of the questions that I had for the county supervisors that we didn't get back to. Is that we do have a high rate of poverty for the county. I believe that the county should be subsidizing some of that. And I want to know what the three of them are fighting to get that. But moving to Geneva does not lift you out of poverty. Moving to Geneva, I mean, there's no public transportation here, there's no well paid, good paying jobs. This is things, there's some, but it's inadequate. And these are the things I'm trying to work on. So, but right now, we do have a crisis and I can understand that you're thinking it should be a regional approach. It should be, but right now, we have residents that are in crisis. And, and we have an obligation, I think, to do something about the code, which is written into law. So we could say, I don't want to not enforce code when people have code violations to say, let's try to think creatively with Lyons. And there are different avenues to work in. Yes, we deserve more money from the county because we have more poor people. But I don't think that.
I'm with you on code. I just don't know what we're gonna do with our market of low income housing when we're technically double saturated compared to the region. I just don't know what we're gonna do there, so I'm, I'm open to ideas. And I, and some of the ideas that you put forward are valid. I just want to make sure that we're considering a very, very, very broad approach of solving this problem rather than just the ideas you threw out. Because I don't like putting, I don't like putting solutions in front of problems, I like talking about the problem and let's bring as many solutions to the table, that's it.
Okay, well, I, I hear you and I will look into it and we can talk at another time publicly, but I hadn't considered it from that way. But I will see what some other folks on all levels think of it and get back to you.
So this is definitely a discussion opportunity, Council Cammer, Senator Sanders, Council Preu. Council Galanese, I didn't ignore you. But what I'm saying is Council Preu kind of proposed a question. And I don't know if somebody was responding to the question or bringing up a new response to Council Salamandro's input. So you guys can flip a coin or if somebody would like to answer Council Preu's question, I'm perfectly okay. Because that was kind of continuity to the discussion that was going on. Jump in.
Okay. I just want to also put it, before anyone jumps in, I also want to put in there that I'm such, I don't have rose colored glasses like you, Mr. Mayor, but I am a dreamer. And one day, when people move to Geneva, I want that to mean that they get prosperous and they become, and they become prosperous. And that actually does propel them into prosperity. Because that's freaking, that's the way, that's the reason why I left and that's the reason why I want other people to come back.
Well, my question was, my question was associated, I think Bill, what he said made sense to me. And that is if you put a lot of low income housing, you're gonna attract people. And I saw on Spectrum TV that they were advertising three different locations for low income housing come to Geneva. So they were advertising it for people outside. And that gets me back to the question, you know, associated with Bill. Are we looking at trying to get housing to fill the existing need or to go beyond that? If we're building beyond the existing need, I think what Bill said makes a lot of sense. If we're really at that level where we're only trying to get people who are sleeping on sofas, a place to live where they could have their own home, that's different. And that gets back to my question is I'm not sure how much space we're talking about. What is the, you know, how many homes do we need and how much of that? And then also, we're only talking low income here. There's also, I think, as the mayor indicated, we need to talk higher income as well. We should look at both. But, so I agree with Bill in the sense that he's right, except I think what I heard Laura saying is that we want space for people who need it right now. Not to bring people in from somewhere else just to fill an existing need. Is that correct?
To my mind, we need space for all of it, that it's not, I don't want to look at this as a low income problem. I want to look at it as a housing conditions problem. And so, everybody, I mean, people of all economic levels rent. And so, I know I've addressed it because of low income and I think that people have a lack of affordable housing. But if you see, my suggestions are not to create affordable housing. Because we don't, we don't, we are a small city and it's not like we can grow. There's just a few places that are ripe for development. And, and none of them really seem suited for low income development. So I think that if, it's taking up a lot of the conversation, but it's not necessarily any of the solutions that I've offered. I would like to think about improving every apartment through the code office. And then, the way that Section Eight works is that you don't have to necessarily live in a low income house. You can just rent an apartment and have your rent subsidized. So if we improve all of the housing stock, low income people can use their Section Eight vouchers all over the city. But right now, there's a lack of that even, there's a lack of housing for anyone. And to Bill's point about the, the low income people coming to Geneva. I mean, the neighborhood study, the comprehensive study and, and just everyone, like, it's agreed upon by most housing experts. That when you invest and keep code, code forces people to keep the outside of their properties looking good. That will in turn cause them to improve their properties. And so, everybody's property starts getting better. You create a community that has shared tools and neighborhoods that are invested in beautifying the city and everyone will want to live here. It won't just be an influx of low income housing. We have to create these neighborhoods that people want to live in.
Think that, is it landlords that's the crux of it then? Do you think that's the thing that you have to point at?
My experience is not all landlords. It is big landlord companies and especially out of town landlords. There's some landlords who have never been in these, in these houses, they've never even been here. Their renters have never met them, it's managed, you can't track them down when they need something, when something breaks, there's no. So, a lot of the part of the conditions being bad, I would say is brought by out of town or slumlords.
For the sake of raising hands, I have Council Galanese and Council Cammer, please.
And Ken, you have a question or an answer to something that Bill or Laura had asked that you want to follow up on before I?
Are you sort of changing things or?
No, 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 I'm just gonna, she said she wanted to go around and get everyone's opinion and.
Well, I'm, I'll, I'll give my two cents. You're welcome to go first if you want.
Okay, yeah, because I'm, I'm not gonna be quick, but I'll go.
Okay, well, I'll, let me try.
Just start talking.
It's good exercise for me.
All right, so listen, so, so John had mentioned, I believe, he said, one off of what Laura had asked of us. That back in the day, let's just call it, that there was seventeen thousand people living in Geneva. And I believe over time, houses were purchased cheap over the years and created a lot of absentee landlords. They did minimal repair, not all landlords, but there are a lot of good landlords, I don't want to misspeak by saying that. And lots of subsidized renters and a lot of landlords don't care. I also want to piggyback off of Mayor Valentino, where he said what I believe is something that we really need to press. And that's more infrastructure and make it a priority and work with the county and state officials. And try to see if there's any grants out there that we can bring money here to create infrastructure. And, and what I mean infrastructure, I'm also going to include, you know, more money to create a better water and sewer system. With a lot of, you know, there's spots all over the city that need to be revamped. That when we do put this money in for more infrastructure, it's going to create more pressure on those old pipes. And there's going to be more problems that will cause the city more money down the road, so we need to look into that. And I basically look at Geneva when it comes to housing, Laura had said something. And I basically look at Geneva when it comes to housing, Laura had said something that she wanted landlords to take care of the outside of their houses. I don't, the outside of the houses is just, is one thing. But I care about the code and safety of people that live inside the houses, making sure that those are up to par. When you, that's one of my biggest fears about Geneva, New York is growing up here and seeing things change over the years is we have made Geneva beautiful year after year. The beautification's there. You peel the onion pedal back. There's a lot of problems there. The people who live there here their whole entire life have seen and dealt with. We want those things to change. So, when people do move here, it's a balanced effort across the board of things, good housing, things for people to do, entertainment, jobs. All these things go hand in hand. And when we talk about housing, I also like to throw in there, when you, you have housing, quality housing stock for everyone, which is a must, but and for everyone's economic status, but we also have to put it in there as a factor. When we have people like, the mayor was saying, housing for, I'm going to say for the people who have money that come here for jobs around the area, they go elsewhere because of our school system. So, housing in school, we need to work together with that too because that's something that's going to draw people with money here that want to help develop Geneva and make it its best. But code enforcement is something that we definitely need to start enforcing. We, I think that we need to hire one more person other than the person we just hired. The more the merrier because it's been a lack of it for so many years that I think that we need to catch up. And we just need to enforce the codes on the books that we have. It's not rocket science of what we need to do. We just need to start doing it. I believe the conversation, we are on the right track and I know that, you know, because of COVID and money situations and we're trying to steer away out of the darkness here that, you know, we need to be smart about this and, you know, make this a priority. Like, I believe that this should be a priority over trying to get rid of moving the railroad tracks. Okay? I'm going to say it. It's a pipe dream. It's not going to happen in our lifetime. We can keep wasting time on it all we want. It's great. But this right here is something of importance and should be a priority. And we should make it a priority. The conversation started tonight and I'd like to keep continuing this conversation more and more. And like I say, I look at Geneva as an onion. It's pretty on the outside, a shiny red apple. You peel it open. There's a lot of good qualities there, but there's a lot of brown spots. We need to, we need to grow an apple that is beautiful through and through. And I believe that that's possible.
So, I have...
Okay, can I go?
Yeah, out of rule, just, just to kind of line things up, Council Cameron, Council Pearl, Council Regan. I see hands going up. Council Peeler, I saw you. It's the second round. We'll come back in. Council Cameron, go ahead.
Okay, I, I guess, I think that Laura brought up a lot of good things, but we're talking about, we're talking about basically, we're talking about the battle. And the battle needs to be fought continuously. And we're not fighting the battle about code inspections and things like that. We still have 408 South Main Street and it's going to stay that way till hell freezes over. We're still gonna, we're still gonna have Linden Street till hell freezes over. We've already shown that we cannot effectively implement or do code enforcement in this city. And, and so, that's, that has to be fixed. And so, it goes right to how effective is our city management? But then we have to get up to the bigger picture. And the fact is, the housing stock of crap houses in the city of Geneva has been going down for 20 years. That's why the, that's why the lists of people on waiting lists to get a place is going up. We've got to start addressing the trends. This conversation's all just, it's just eating around the edges. It's, I don't know, it's, it's, the main problem with the city have to be addressed. And you've all heard it before. We have to grow. Second of all, but we, how can we grow if we have a tax problem like we do? And we have an entity on the edge of town that is building housing where the landlord or the owner doesn't pay taxes like we do. We have, we've got 30 acres on the edge of Lockland Road going out there. Where, you know, forget about all the problems with everybody in Slauson Lane and everything else. We have 30 acres there. Zone it and let's build. You know, I mean, what is it? The thing is, is that you have an ineffective policy or plan. The things that Laura's talking about, that's the, that's the battle. But the war is, we have got to do all those things. And the railroad, the railroad is, is, is right now, you say that how beautiful Geneva is? I guess you think that railroad's pretty. And I guess you think that the house at 408 is pretty. How about the one at 42 Dorchester Avenue where the porches are unsafe and are practically going to fall into Dorchester Avenue if you look at them? Okay, so the, I don't know what you all are talking about, but you're missing the point. The point is, we have to create some wins quickly that we can point to. We've got to address these problems that are right and staring us in the face. And we have to show that we can effectively do it. And if Sage needs a law that's going to light a fire under the 408, Linden Street and 42 Dorchester and half a dozen other places, then propose it. Let's pass it and let's make it happen. But that isn't going to solve the problem. That isn't going to get anybody off the waiting list. It's not going to create housing opportunities or anything else. We need a grand plan. Okay, so what are they? We want, we want the federal government to pass their rescue because there's not going to be any money in the state government for grants where we are going to get gifts from anyone. So, if we can't get gifts from anyone, what are we going to do then? Well, then we're going to have to figure out what is it we're going to do and how are we going to make space or how are we going to make growth happen? That's in fast-tracking zoning at the, you know, so that we can build and understanding the new developments. This whole conversation that you had, that we had today about the, you know, whatever is it, the DMV. The fact is, is it's, it's, we're swimming against the tide. Everybody's buying stuff online. And after this whole COVID thing is over with, nobody is going to be buying anything in downtown Geneva.
Oh, my God. How can you make that...
The thing is, the thing is, is that it's going to, how's it going to be a destination? Well, first of all, we have a huge housing track opportunity at the Town and Country Plaza. If you go to any moving place around, around city, you know, around Washington, everything else, all of those little satellite cities have a new type of development. Retail on the bottom and three stories or four stories of residential living. It is the new norm and we don't have a single thing like that. And you had, you had the, the zoners come in. They said, you know what, you know, the zoning people, they talked about Route 14 going north. They talked about, we want to zone. What we want to have is two-story, not one-story. I mean, face the trends. We have to have a big plan. We have to address the big issues and we have to have some quick hits.
How's it, Pearl, then Council Regan?
I love this conversation and I've been talking about it for a couple of decades through the BID, through former city manager. And Laura has a lot of spot-on points. But, you know, we have a very, very old housing stock and we have very, very large houses relative to what families want to purchase today. All right, so it was not unusual when I was growing up that most of my friends' families were four, five, six, seven, eight children. And we had large houses and of course, they were all owner-occupied. No one is having three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine children today. And quite frankly, the, the younger families that are buying their first home or their second home are not actually buying a large house. This is a trend like Ken is talking about. People don't want large houses. So, it's important to understand the issue that we're in right here when you look at how lifestyles have changed. There are a lot of fantastic landlords in Geneva. There's a lot of horrible landlords in Geneva. There's a lot of fantastic landlords that live out of Geneva, out of state and out of the country. There are a lot of horrible landlords that actually live out of the country and out of state that own property in Geneva. I deal with all of them. I have clients in England that own houses in Geneva that are rental properties. Okay, so we have one-family houses on Pulteney Street with six bedrooms. And the landlord is getting $500 or $600 a month to college students. Okay? That's not a bad thing, but are these places being inspected? Okay? Are these the places that have bedbugs? I don't know the answer to that. In our term, we may see a very slow turnaround on the number of college units actually needed off-campus by the current enrollment trends of our local college. So, if we, if we look at college needs, if we look at smaller families, another huge impact that is actually having, it's a factor here, is the number of short-term rentals that are 12-month short-term rentals. So, we have, we have fantastic rental housing stock, let's just say on Park Place. And a lot of it is short-term rental. It's the same thing with the row houses. All right? We have a lot of row houses that are long-term and short-term rental. And back in the 60s and the 70s and the 80s, these were actually all owner-occupied homes with maybe a basement apartment rented. It's completely different now. I think we have to fix what we have and I don't see how we can fix it without changing the way we enforce the code. We can't hire enough people in the code enforcement department to actually address this. But we have all these qualified code enforcement people that are in another department that are only inspecting certain types of occupancies. Why is that? That does not make sense to me. Why are we not using qualified code enforcement people in the fire department to inspect our one and two-family units? Because right now, I might need a correction here, our one and two families are not being inspected. We're only inspected three and over?
I think they, I think they can't be inspected, right? They're protected by law?
Can we say what ordinance that is and how it could be changed?
So, so anyway, it's something to look into, but, but you know, the majority of rental units in nearly every small community is under three units. They're one and two-family homes. And I believe that if we look at these one and two-family homes that for whatever reason are currently exempt from inspection, that's probably where the issues are that Laura is referring to. Okay, another issue that we have is that real estate, investment real estate is cheap in Geneva. We had two or three very large rental properties on Hamilton Street sold to an investor in Massachusetts in the fourth quarter of last year. And, and he's just packing them with college kids. All right? Now, I don't think these homes are not maintained, okay, but I don't know if they're, I don't know if they're being inspected. So, I think we, to shorten this up a little bit, I think we have to change the way that we do our inspections and how we do code enforcement. Because we could have a code enforcement department of three and all three of them could be busy 40 hours a week just by doing rental inspections. But their demand in the purpose of their existence is far more than just inspecting housing stock. So, I do think we need to revamp that. So, I know Adam is on this call and I'm not able to reveal the details, but Frank and John and I and Adam have asked Adam to look into something that has to do with, with how we handle rental units in Geneva. But more on that is a later time. Right, Adam? I think you're going to get some answers for us. I don't, yeah, so I'm all for this. I think it should be, it should be a priority. Again, I love the rental registry, the tool library thing. You know, all I can think of is Blueprint Geneva. You know, they would love to tackle a tool, a tool library program, which just goes perfect with their mission statement. So, whatever needs to be done, I, you know, Ken, Council Cameron, he had a lot of good ideas. Some of his are certainly not easy with zombie properties and 408, I'm very close to that. And anyway, this is a fantastic conversation. It's nothing new. And we should, we need to look at it.
Thanks, Tom. Can I just be clear? You do support inspections of one and two-bedroom?
A hundred percent.
You do. Who does? Can we just, it's getting close to the end. Is anyone else on stack?
I think what we need to do is maybe just get that, how we can reverse the decision that was made before to only go above those one and two-family rentals and then understand the impact because there is an impact because there is a capacity constraint in our code enforcement office right now. So, I see Sage taking notes over there. So, let's, let's get that information so we can come back and have a more in-depth conversation. Okay?
I believe that one and two apartments, code enforcement on them was a state ruling. I think that some, right Sage?
Let's wait. Let's get some details.
I'll give you the history and that, I'll give you a overview at a different time. Yep.
But just so I'm clear, going forward, this council seems to support rental registry and more inspections, inspections of one and two units.
I like enforcing code. I love, I like...
Yeah, enforcing code. I'd like to know more about your, your registry and where I can find more information about that. You said what city has that?
Okay, I'll send it out. The thing that I didn't hear people talk about and I just, I thought it was like, we know we live in Geneva, say you're a homeowner and you, or you want to buy a property and you get a loan for this house that you want, but it's old. I wonder about the, the grant money going to fix up. If old housing stock is one of our issues, I just feel like it could be turned into one of our assets because people really love old homes, but they just can't take on that burden. So, I was, I just didn't hear much feedback on the idea to use the CDBG. I might have confused those letters, grants money to give like low-interest home repair loans.
On that point, remember something? Timeout, because I have, I just want to step out on a limb here because I have Council Grandma Regan, I believe.
Oh, okay, sorry. I didn't know she was here.
Sorry. First of all, thank you everyone. I stumbled with the mute button, obviously, and went the wrong way on that. But yeah, that's the reaction when your baby sends you a picture of him holding a baby that we've been waiting for all day. And I knew entering this meeting, it was probably going to happen here. So, I can't believe I didn't have any more control than that, but thank you.
Congratulations!
Jen, would you just give us the name, the weight and the length?
We don't know the name. I tell you, when this one was born, it took us four days to name him. So, maybe that's hereditary, you know, but I don't want to take up the whole time with personal stuff.
This is reported and you can share it with the baby in the future.
Yes. Oh, yeah. I would just send him a video saying I dreamed of seeing something. So, but in any event, I may have missed some of this and I really appreciate this conversation too. I think there has been obviously a focus on lower-income housing and the quality of our housing stock where it so desperately needs attention. And I don't want to just repeat things that I may have missed anyways, but I want to go back also to include the whole concept of people, and again, this may have been talked about, I hope not. People are leaving here who are like, you know, grandmothers like myself here, you know? People are leaving to go to other places where they're, you know, they can do the first floor thing and they don't have as much upkeep and, you know, and, and people like now my son who has a baby, they, they want to have different, it's what Ken was talking about. The trends for housing are different. And while we talk so broadly about so many issues that are really important here, one thing that's, that's at our plates right now is the change in zoning, which does affect Slauson Lane. Which does affect Sloss and Lane, I have very dear friends there, I know the opposition there. But this is such a hemmed in community, and I think that area is one that um. You know, like right now, my understanding of agricultural is. You actually can build a single family home on an agriculturally zoned property. Um it hasn't happened, you know, no one's bought up that land, because the trend for housing has changed. If someone wanted to develop it with a lot of single houses, they would. I really support the buffer and everything else, but I think it's one thing that is in front of us that we can change. Um or possibly change if there's a developer who would want it, you know, who will who will take that land and go with it, but um. It's something concrete in front of us now, I also really agree with the whole. Um uh you know, Town and Country Plaza, whatever we can do there, right up the road is another. Um place being developed, that's gonna be that, it's gonna be just what this could be. So I I, the whole thing is huge to me, I I love all the discussion about the lower income, I think Geneva is a place that has to have. Good solid housing for for its totality of population. And we lose some people who may not need the lower income housing. And I hate to see that happen, so I think we have to look at the housing trends. And we have that opportunity in front of us uh with our zoning vote, thank you.
Can I, can I say something real quick? I I going off of what everyone's saying here, I I I believe that we need to fix what we already have, the problems we already have. Before we start bringing on more. And we keep on talking about developers, well, there's plenty of developers that we can get in contact with. And I'm not even talking local developers, I'm talking look developers in other cities, Rochester, they're in in Canadawah. In Farmington, and bring them here and ask them. Point blank, why don't you come to Geneva? And instead of speculating, they're gonna tell you why. Because they have the money and there are reasons that they don't come here, you're just not gonna say, well, we're gonna zone. Uh Sloss and Lane to what it should be or what we think it should be, and they're gonna come, it doesn't happen like that. Infrastructure is one of the key components to bring in a developer here, but there's a lot of other factors that we overlook that we should polish up. And really take a look at before we keep on saying, you know, we need somebody to come here and develop this. I mean, obviously, there's some other small problems or big problems that. Are the reasons why developers aren't coming here other than those things, and I think that they can be addressed by straight up asking people.
The highest taxes in the state.
It doesn't have nothing to do with it.
Okay.
Your timeout, there's not, there's nothing here.
Okay, wait. Great discussion, Council Peeler's been patient, he did raise his hand some time ago, so I'd like to give the floor to Council Peeler, please.
Thank you, congratulations, Jan. And in high school, my biology teacher said the greatest. Success in the natural world is being a grandparent, so it always stuck with me, so I um. I have goosebumps on my cheeks and on my neck, so awesome. Um I wish that. Um. I wanna go to the study of the comprehensive plan, cuz it did say that housing was a crisis in Geneva. But when you look at the supply of our housing. It's really not, we don't have a lack of supply. We have the most supply of the region, and I think there's importance when we use facts and rhetoric in different ways. And Ken, I don't know where you are receiving your information. That we are receiving, that there's some national trend of smaller homes or small home buying. Um you go, feel free to look into this yourself, the average new homes built and new homes bought in two thousand nineteen. The median was twenty six hundred square foot home. The median home size in Geneva is sixteen hundred foot. People are moving out of Geneva for bigger houses. People are moving out of Geneva for newer houses, and the data is clear about it. Now, there might be an uptick in people buying smaller houses, but there's not an uptick in the general sales. And and if anything, there's been an uptick in the general sales for larger houses, I believe it was something like six percent. And 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 so I wanna make sure that if we're gonna be speaking in rhetoric, we say that I I think or I heard that. Instead of like the things are factual, and I I of course, someone might be able to find a website that shows a different percentage point that I found. But I I I encourage you to research these things. And the reason why I'm so passionate about this is cuz I've been doing it since two thousand ten, when I started the Finger Lakes, Finger Lakes Leadership Program. When we were asked to solve deep problems in Geneva. And that is connecting people to from downtown to the lakefront. How to, how to uh cauterize the wound that is our residences in Geneva? Because we've lost almost nine hundred residents in ten years. And uh those challenges are going to be. Accepting truth and not just uh u- using. Uh word salad to solve problems that might not be technically factually accurate. So I I wanna go back to that study and see if people were framed the right questions. When asked, do we need more low income housing, maybe they didn't know that we had the most. Of the region, because then we don't need more low income housing, we just have a massive demand for low income housing. And that's a big difference, demand and supply, right? It's not that we don't have any, which it's all full. It's it's full. So so then it feels like that there's a lack of housing, really, there's just a lack of. Uh a lack of supply, but we have a lot of supply, but it's just, it's just a lack of residual supply. Um to be, to to talk about the town and all their housing and building. They they just built a senior living facility, what, a half a decade ago, on Preemption Road or a little bit longer than that? And it was supposed to be for senior living, and it was upscale senior living, and they couldn't, they couldn't fill it, they couldn't populate it, so they. They put low income housing right into it to fill it up, because that's where the, that's where the demand was. That's the demand, so there's there's a. There's some hard questions that we have to ask with tackling these problems, and I wanna make sure that we 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 speak to the problem and not to the feeling that it might be causing. Cuz we do have a code enforcement problem, we do have a quality housing stock problem, and we definitely have. A high demand for low income housing. And I hope that doesn't mean that we just take our housing stock that we have now and repurpose it for. Low income housing, cuz I don't think that's gonna be the solution to Geneva's long-term problems. And I hope we can take a good hard look in the mirror and figure out how we're gonna make Geneva an inviting place. An inviting place for people who wanna own own homes and prosper. One of the things I do wanna note, and you can check out the website yourself, is a uh. Website called Ion Housing. And that's ionhousing.org, and you can search for Geneva in there, and right now, there is. The average, the average home sold in Geneva. The average home sold in the United States was twenty five hundred square foot. So all all homes in two thousand nineteen were twenty five hundred square foot was the was the average size, so. We just need. I just, Ken, you 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 talked about these micro homes, it's it's not a thing. It's not a thing the way you're describing it, so so we're gonna have to be real honest, we fill Geneva full of nine hundred square foot homes, we and people are still moving out.
Nothing about micro homes.
Well, you know, it's smaller homes, we have the smallest homes. All right, we have, we have very right sized homes with a average home size of sixteen hundred square feet. And ten years ago, the average home size was nineteen hundred square feet, so we are downsizing our homes and we're scaling them down on average. So dividing, subdividing uh places, we're doing it.
I think all those facts are confusing you, Bill.
I'm I, yeah, facts get confusing.
Can I, wait, can I create some focus here? Okay, so we're at eight oh one, and um I'd like to just get a little bit of focus. Great topic, thank you, Counselor Salamandra. Great discussion by all councils, because I think it was passionate and there was a lot of good information here. There are a couple other things on our agenda, so I just need to temperature counsel. On where you'd like to go, I think, you know, moving forward action item. I really think that there was um some good focus on code enforcement, and we need some input back from staff. On how to change what we currently have in place and how we'd like to do that. Um just a little bit of, maybe just a picturesque point of view from from what I was saying about trying to tap into. State or federal support for infrastructure. If you take a look at Jeanette or Emily Street in Geneva, I think those are, they're great examples. Of how things were incubated in those neighborhoods, those were owner occupied, had to live in them for a certain number of years. If you look at those properties now, based on what they paid for them and the value of now, it's it's huge. So you know, those those are the things that I try to rely on, examples of successes. That we've done in our community, and I'd like to expand upon that. So just temperature of counsel. We have railroad agreement for. For railroad with Counselor Cameron, then we've got uh other things we could talk about if we'd like to. Temperature on where you'd like to go, would you like to move on to the next topic? Um just unmute and please jump in, because I I need support from you guys to tell me where you wanna be.
I would just say, just to barge in here, uh I think Ken's discussion, wherever you are, Ken, there you are. Um it's gonna be longer than. I I was originally gonna be on the agenda and I wasn't, so I I, but I could just really quickly say what I wanna talk about. Because it's really just proposing something for a future meeting, I don't mean to step on you, Ken, but I feel like you're gonna need more more time. But s- say something, so I don't.
No, I don't, I won't, I you're you're welcome to talk, but all I wanna do is explain the item I sent out about. Uh the uh IDA. Uh arrangement, because I think it's instructive, that's all, I was only.
If people are up for it, I'd I'd just as soon hear from Kenny, and then if I could just have a couple minutes, that'd be fine for me.
Are are we okay with housing right now? Okay, good, all right, Counselor Cameron, if you can kind of give us the condensed version, we'd appreciate it.
Hey, I I'm gonna try to share my screen, just to go through the thing very quickly. Oh. Uh oh, the host disabled participant screen sharing. Oh, so I can't do that?
No, I can, just give it some time.
I just changed it, Ken, you should be good now.
Oh, okay, let's let's give it a go. Okay, let me see if I can find what the hell, where the hell was it? I'm sorry, I'm trying to see it in my thing here, I have it open.
So Adam, is your video off because you need a haircut, or what's the deal? You're sitting in the jacuzzi, I think.
I'm good.
Okay, I just um quickly, um Adam was kind enough to get the uh. The IDA and the county in it to to provide some idea of how the. Uh. The railroad pilot works, okay, and we're coming up, as I said to you all. Um in two thousand twenty four, we have to have a new agreement in place, we're in the like the seventeenth or eighteenth year. No, it's have been, it's been three ten year. Agreements, but they're all the same. It's just been, they've been renewed, but we're gonna have to negotiate something, but this is how. The these, these categories, sixteen categories on the left. Um you know, towns and cities in the the county, and this is how the fifty one thousand dollars, if you look at. Uh column F. We shared fifty one thousand one hundred and sixty eight dollars. That this, that the railroad gave the county under their pilot. It was, if you look in column E, it was. It was less than half a percent. Of their annual revenue. Okay, so now, all I did is with with column G, you know, I asked myself a few questions. We have the most, you know, maybe, maybe this, I don't know how we came up with this. You know, why, why does the city of Geneva get three thousand nine hundred and eighty five bucks? I don't know what the formulas are there. So I thought, well, let's go to the column G that I have here, the estimated municipal organizational taxable property. And let's just first for a minute, say, who's taxed the most? And who's taxed the least, or who has the most taxable property? And who has the least taxable property? And of course, you know, the IDA and the Ontario County Treasurer and the school districts, that doesn't even apply. So if we were to say, okay, so we go down to the towns, I go down and I just made up some numbers. Ninety five, seventy five, eighty five percent of the property in these other places is on the tax rolls. In the city of Geneva, it's forty seven percent. So I thought, well, you know, let's, let's add it all up and cut it, cut and paste it and do and reapportion it. Based on the fact that. We're the community in the Ontario County, it's the most. That has the, you know, that has the most untaxed property, if we did some kind of a new formula based on actual numbers. And let's say my numbers in yellow are actually real, the city would get more. But that's all I'm saying, so that's, that's what I'm saying is, is that our. Supervisors should be charged to really look at. The arrangement that we have now. Not so that we can. You know. A portion or chop up chicken feed, because that's what fifty one thousand one hundred and seventy four dollars is, it's chicken feed. So you know, what's the point of us all arguing about it, but I think this thing shows you. Overall. That it's, you know, it's a deal, it's it's run its course, I mean, this arrangement is twenty seven years old. Okay, so we need some real acute. You know. Look at this thing, and we have to look at this, and we have to change this relationship going forward. Otherwise, we're doing a disservice to our taxpayers. Now, is it getting uh the Finger Lakes Railroad to share a hundred thousand dollars with us? And to change the formula, that still might only bring in fifty thousand dollars to the city. So what we do though is by showing this and keeping this part of the negotiations. We are going to ask the county to drive a harder bargain, and at the same time. I'm saying we ask the county. We want the county's help to move this railroad, and we tell the railroad. When we're, because the railroad right now would say. The way they would approach it is, if you want us to move, we would be really doing you a big favor. And that's not true. Um yes, it would be great, but the fact is, you haven't been doing us any favors for thirty years. You can tell us all about the employment that you've brought the the area, and how many people live in Geneva? But the fact is. You know. It 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 doesn't look like a very, it doesn't look very good, that's my speech, so I just wanted you to all know how it is, and I I hope we uh. We can uh, you know, revisit this and look at it a different way, but I wanted you to have complete transparency. On what this. You know, what this is.
Thanks, Ken, and I think um, you know, that was good, if you can quit sharing the screen so I can see everybody.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to, I have to figure out how to do that.
I think.
I got a question.
boil down to for counsel is. Are we behind a a supporting a tougher negotiation? With the Finger Lakes Railroad, so I do see a couple hands, I see Counselor Gallenace and Counselor Peeler.
I I I'm in support of putting the pressure on them for more, absolutely, with anything, we can get more, we can get more. Um do I think that it's an effort that hasn't been done before? No, um but it's worth a, it's worth a try. Uh I just don't like to talk of, what have they done for Geneva in the last thirty years, I mean, that railroad track's been there for two hundred, I don't know how long, but more than thirty years. It did do a service to Geneva. So to make that that statement is something I don't like, and also. You you know, you said you punched in these numbers and you just made them up, I I mean, with that flow chart or graph that you did, I I I. That to me is, I understand the perception of what you're trying to get to, but. I mean, putting in, just putting in numbers and.
Second, though, I didn't put in the numbers in the first couple of columns.
I get that.
We're getting three thousand nine hundred and eighty five dollars, that's not a made up number. The numbers in yellow are the ones I made up, okay? That was to create a scenario where we presented a scenario where. The city being the most. With the least amount of taxable property would get more.
And that's our problem, that's not their problem, we've created that problem. Maybe not, and maybe not directly, but we've created that problem, we just had the conversation, we wanna compile more onto the problem we already have. When you're saying, we have this problem, well, let's not have this problem anymore, let's take. Charge of what the problem we have in Geneva and correct it before we pile more on top of it, yes, push the railroad to see if we can get more. Um you know, just because we're the lone man on the totem pole with the forty seven percent, that doesn't. Necessarily mean that, you know, we should have our hand out, I mean, I don't think that they're gonna feel that way, I I see, I I completely understand where you're coming from, I do. And it's worth the efforts, but I don't believe that it should be a priority, I think that there's other things that are priorities, but I'm willing. And I do agree that more pressure, let's see where it goes, but. I think that there's other things.
That's all I'm looking for at this point, because we, as Counselor um Camera said, we've got until two thousand twenty three, we'll say. Um so just kinda looking for general consensus, um Counselor Peeler, go ahead, Counselor, then Counselor Pruitt.
So. I think mainly, I think mainly just two points, or maybe three. Um one of them, and I, and Sager Adam, you can confirm this, without that Finger Lakes Railroad. Um, one of them, and I, and Sager Adam, you can confirm this, without that Finger Lakes Railroad short line railroad, because that's considered a short line railroad, it does small trips. It really serves the, the, I believe, the top tier uh of the state between uh. It it goes, it goes, it goes up, it serves the top tier. And a a lot of traffic is run on short line railroads, based on my last research, it doesn't really, not a lot of train traffic runs on international line anymore. But without that railroad, we wouldn't have been as attractive for Guardian Glass, is that correct? Correct.
There's a lot of businesses not in Geneva, so yeah, and then the county too.
I underst- I understand there's others, but Guardian is a, is a, is a, is a larger employer and they're also paying taxes. Right, they're not paying a pilot, or at least their pilot has expired.
They're paying a pilot.
They're paying a big pilot.
It, their last pilot extent was extended for how long?
Uh, I believe it's another, I believe it's fifteen years from when it originally. Uh, from tw- from twenty eighteen, and it's a, it's a large amount that they pay.
Do you, do you know what it is? Off the top of your head?
The amount.
Yeah, of their pilot.
I know that the, the pilot for their, for the year um is about nine hundred thousand, but it uh, it gets split amongst the. City, county and school, um, I think our portion is around three hundred fifty to four hundred thousand a year.
We can, all right, well, thank, I I, we can talk about that again, because I think that's a topic that needs to, that needs discussing, because pilots um. I think are important for lots of entities uh to think about, including our not-for-profits, in some states. Not-for-profits are, pilots are part of their state constitutions, we, we don't seem to follow that trend in in many states that don't have this. Uh, not-for-profit glut that just takes the city right off the tax roll. Um. One of the things that I wanted to bring up was, uh, and Ken, I don't know if you know this, the, I mean, maybe you do, the Finger Lakes Rail Pilot is a five-county or. I think it's a five-county agreement. And I'm just, and to back, piggyback off of what Frank says. Our financial burdens are not the responsibility directly. Of the all those five counties that that are, that that have fashioned this contract. And that's, uh, uh, our burden is factual, right, we we know it, we know what it is. I'm not, but how how do we, how do we leverage another county to tell them that we're more important because of our own? Uh, hundred years of decisions that have, that have turned, that have, that have gone this way. And they're like, well, we've made great decisions for a hundred years, what's your problem?
You know, it's like, how do you? I'm more feisty than you are, I'm gonna fight for Geneva.
As I mentioned, we have plenty of time to have this discussion.
Sure.
Really, what we're talking about is, should we be pushing for a position?
Sure, and my next question to Adam or Sage, or maybe Ken knows this, because Ken, you've done some great research. Uh. What does the Norfolk Southern Line pay us in pilot?
We don't, we don't get anything from them.
Okay, so what what we're saying is, is we we get something from Finger Lakes Rail, we get nothing from a Fortune five hundred company, and we're gonna push back on the local business?
Well, caution there, because it was a federally mandated line, which is that line. That's the only line that cannot be removed, so it falls under.
Oh, I understand, but that doesn't mean we can't, I'm just saying that the the pushback is, we're 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 pushing back on the local business. Instead of the international Fortune five hundred company, and it's just, I just want to make that clear.
We don't have a pilot with them either.
Right, they, we get nothing.
I did look it up, the um, Guardian Glass pilot is thirty-two point two-five million over nineteen years, so they have a. Just, I didn't, I didn't want the idea to get out that they aren't operating on a pilot, it's a big one.
Counselor Pruitt.
Thank you, first of all, I want to commend uh the the numbers that Ken put together. I thought it was really a good slice of the way to look at it, it's the sort of thing you'd want to bring to the supervisor, see, to see if there's some relief. But one thing that wasn't mentioned, I think that's accretive to what was listed there, and helps to answer part of what Bill was just saying, is why are we different? And I think one of the reasons is, we've got all of their their boxcars with graffiti all over, dirty and up, lakefront. And it's all parked right here, it's not parked in Shirtsville or Manchester, uh, and so I think that adds a, an additional. Element in terms of what we're contributing to the, you know, to the benefit of the railroad. And uh, along those lines, I'm, I wonder, do we get part of other? Other locations as pilot programs, if we're sharing pilots from our location to elsewhere in the county, is there also some money that's coming in? From other locations, uh, you know, reciprocally? And then finally, um, I mentioned the train storage space, it seems like, I I know most of you are familiar with Gary Baxter's thoughts on. Developing that uh, that east uh Lewis Street area, the cobblestones and everything, it could be really nice, like you've heard me mention before, like. Uh, Pittsford Landing, um, and I I think really, the only way to do that is to see if we could, with incentives, not forcing them, I understand they're federal. But to see if we could get the train company to push uh its storage units further east. They've got ex, they do have excess space over there, there's, it would be nice, because we're gonna need that, as some of the most desirable land for putting up condos or something eventually. And so if we're looking at really starting to renegotiate with them, I would say it's not just a matter of getting another thirty or forty thousand a year out of them, or a hundred thousand. It'd be better if we could get them to move, just relocate the tracks, you know, another two hundred yards or three hundred yards further east, that's all we would need. So good numbers, uh, adding to that, I'd say, is that, do we get pilots, and I'd still like an answer to that, from anybody else, do we get benefit from? Sharing our pilot, uh, do we get it from anywhere else? And uh, and also, again, I think as we're going into the discussion, I'd really like to look at the space that they're utilizing more than the money we could derive from them. Remember, their headquarters is not even in our county, it's in the next county over. That's it for me, so really, do we get money from anybody else's pilots?
We don't.
Why do we, why are we the only ones sharing?
This is a county IDA agreement that we are. Receiving, it's not ours.
The IDA must have relationships with other locations that are not only developing here.
No, but but we have to have five, the five county IDAs, there's a county IDA, there there's an IDA in each of the counties, so they, we have to sign that. We're part of a five-county agreement, but we have to sign our piece of it. So the thing is, if we just say, if we are to say, we have some leverage by saying, we don't want to do this, this way. And the other counties would then say, well, what are you talking about, and then we start a negotiation that's to the greater benefit of the city of Geneva than this.
Even within the county, though, we've got money going out, no money coming in for the same purpose, pilot sharing, so that doesn't ring, I I don't think that makes sense to me. Uh, I'd like to check into why that's the case, maybe even, we could find out from Nikon or something, or maybe the supervisors could tell us. Does that sound?
Can I just clarify our question, this isn't a Geneva IDA agreement, are you saying, just wanted to clarify that this is. An agreement that the county has that we are, we are getting a benefit from. So our Geneva IDA is not the lead on this. And you're wondering if there are other opportunities where we're not the lead, but we could be cost-sharing, is that what you're asking?
Yes, in other words, so uh, let's say in Canada Digwa, that they're not the lead, but there's, I don't know, a train that comes to Canada Digwa. Would the IDA that the county sets up for Canada Digwa, would they, would they share with us, like we're sharing with, you know, like they're sharing? Uh. You know, with the the train system, with everybody in the Shirtsville, Manchester, those places, why aren't we getting something back? From, I mean, we're, the IDA, the county IDA is only, I mean, they've not only done business in Geneva, they must have other relationships. And if they're sharing the pilots for what's being done in Geneva, why are they not sharing it for what's being done elsewhere? I'm surprised this is confusing.
It's just that, it's all the, all the municipalities that are part of that Finger Lakes Railway, so.
On the pilot.
Uh, what comes through Geneva, but everybody that's participating, it's not just for the Geneva piece, it's for.
It's a lone pilot.
Yes, everybody's participating, and is that, is that the only model of everybody participating in the whole county?
Correct, and we have to all sign a lease agreement to be a.
That's the only business sharing in the whole county, there's no other business that's, the whole county shares it, is that correct?
We, we can confirm, I guess the difference is that it's not just for the railroad being in Geneva. That everybody's sharing in it, they're sharing it because each community has a part of that railroad coming through.
The, the only other agreement that I can think of would be the Wilmright at Eastview Mall that is a. Shared agreement, I'm not even sure where the pilots are, but Counselor Pruitt, I.
You're right.
You know, I'm trying to reach in my memory banks and think of something that might be shared across multiple. Municipalities or multiple. Communities, and that would be the only other one.
We'll ask the question with Mike Manikowski for his recollection too. Thanks for the clarification.
It seems, uh, but okay, thanks, folks.
I recall we sold them some of our Empire Zone credits or something like that, and then we received money from that, and that's how we, we bartered away our, our, our. Credits for eternal expansion for their money.
I think the number's around a hundred and fifty K.
Okay, I'd like to keep moving here, I'll move to Counselor Regan, I think we've. You know, we've got plenty of time, like I said, to talk about this agreement. And I'm glad Counselor Camera brought it up, but there's plenty of time to br- to continue the discussion. Counselor Regan?
Yes, I can be brief, uh, because, as I said, it's more a proposal that. I'd, I'd like to see if people are willing to have a work session on this, like fairly soon, probably next month. So uh, most of you are probably familiar with C, uh, CCA programs, community choice aggregation programs, these, these um allow us to. Uh, join with other communities and to purchase our electricity, and and it would designate a um, you know, a single source. And we can identify something like, you know, making it renewable, which is what most of these do. Uh, to make a a renewable supply, energy supply for our electrical source. Um, probably some people are familiar with the town which did this. One of the programs, um, about three years ago, they're about to restart, and in the process, um, a lot has changed. Uh, that makes it even more attractive, um, you know, for one thing, it's become a, a, a single bill, which is really beneficial. Um, there's still pretty much, there's still really a guarantee, uh, they hate to give a number, but that this would be uh, cost-effective for residents. Uh, the, you you would be paying less in your electric bill, obviously, it supports sustainable energy, which I think is an important priority for us to have. Um, uh, there's actually two programs that would, that we could put into place, and um. If we were to do it that way, which is really what's recommended and what the town is going for, um. We would also be eligible for a couple pretty large chunks of money that would come back to us, one would be. Uh, it would have to go towards sustainable programs, there's plenty of things we could do with that kind of funding, though. Um, it's, it's roughly fifty dollars a household, and that would only come back to us from people, obviously, who don't opt out of this program. And also people, uh, because it's a solar credit kind of thing, people don't already have solar power on their, their own roofs, um, we would not qualify either. But uh, the other one is um, through NYSERDA. Um, and this is something, people know a lot more about this than I do, we're already sort of gaining points with NYSERDA for various programs we have in place. Um, when you get to a certain point, you are eligible for larger grants and um, there there's a. Mandate to get these kinds of programs going from the state, so the the incentives are all there right now, it's truly like a a win-win-win kind of situation. Because the town is re-upping, we could be a part of their application, really, it could be one larger group applying. To tr- you know, to to gain this for our, our citizens, the other changes happened, which may sound uncomfortable on your first hearing, is. Um, it's a, now an opt-out program, or we can make it an opt-out program, which would guarantee us, obviously, more people, some people would never even notice. Um, that it happened, which sounds like you're trying to pull something on someone, but. Um, there would first be many, many community education programs going on to let people know what's happening. You can opt out at any time, either before it starts, or when you realize it and say, that's the last thing I want, you can get out then, there's no penalty. Um. And uh, you know, it's, it, the the whole thing, oh, also, there's no charge to the community, apparently, these solar projects and other um. Uh, you know, energy efficient kinds of, or sustainability programs, they they have to recruit all over, it costs them a fortune. So um, they really like uh CCA programs because it does that work for them, and as a result, they're the ones who who make that kind of a payment. Uh, back to the residents, but what I would really like to see, if there's agreement, is um, an invitation, which we could extend. To the people who would administer this program and explain it far better than I did, and um, just give people a start as to. Uh, the potential of it and how we could put it into place, so that's really all I wanted to say, I'd just be curious what the level of interest would be. To um, explore it further with people who can answer all the questions that I'm sure will have.
I would like that.
Yeah, I think we should always do that, and I see Counselor Gallinari and Counselor Burrell, I, but I think my challenge was, last time we didn't do this. Was it wasn't a financial benefit to us or to the city or to the residents, and Adam might know a lot more about that. So before, you know, I think I want to tap into our control before we talk about, you know. Bringing in somebody else to have that discussion, Counselor Gallinari, Counselor Burrell, flip a coin.
Yeah, I wanna, I I remember when the town did this, they had a couple of presentations, they did it in the basement of the Smith Opera House. It wasn't during a town meeting, and I believe that. The same thing should go on here, it shouldn't take up time with council, the people who want to participate. Have the option to, on their own free will, go down to this Smith Opera House, wherever we want to house this thing and get informed about it. It it's good for some people, but I don't know if it's, it's something that we really need to look into, or put forth on everybody in the city. Like Jan says, you can opt out of it if you want to and at any time, um, so it's something to look into and I'm all for it.
Counselor Burrell?
And and I was gonna say the same thing, if Jan can hook up the presentation in in a session, um, and and I also want, Jan, if you could clarify. Um, you said that if we participate, if we have a certain number of um, uh, citizens participate. Then we can get some sustainability funds coming back to our community?
Right, there's actually two programs that would provide something like this, um, one is i- is dealing directly with uh somehow solar credits. And the other is just through NYSERDA, and again, I I I've done a little bit of looking into it. Um, but I couldn't connect with the person who really had most of that information, but it's, it's a grant, that would be a grant. And and you know, before the time we, I mean, we can pull all tho- those things together, so people could know more about it.
Yeah, I I mean, based on, on all the efforts that we're doing on Dora Nav with composting and and vermiculture. Um, you know, I I think this is something that we need not overlook, so um. I I'm enthusiastic over the presentation.
Great.
Me too.
Sure, it can be a half an hour, twenty minutes, whatever, yeah.
I I I just think that the presentation should not go on council time or the work session, we got our own things to worry about, it should be something that's set up. With a presentation done at the, you know, like I said, at somewhere else, if you want to go to it and be part of it, then so be it, but I think that our work sessions. Are limited, we need all the time we can, there's a lot of important things and priorities that we need to to conquer, I think this is a great thing. I know that the town, like you said, sustainable uh grants, and I believe that theirs was used for uh. Stormwater prevention projects to help enhance that, um, so it is a good thing and it's beneficial to the community and saving the lakes and are, you know.
Yeah, my only reason to bring it up, I think the city would have to back it, I don't think we can just like, you you know, I mean, it would. Uh, the the letters come from the city to your, to all the residents, so we would have to be behind it, at least, you know, nodding agreement or whatever. Before it could um, really bring to the people.
No, both.
Am I next? I I support bringing this to council, I um. I think that a lot of times when we split up and get information, it can just get misconstrued, so I would just like us all to be in the same room, hearing directly from the presenters about what it would be. Um, so I thank you for presenting this and supporting.
Counselor Piller, Counselor Camera?
Real quick, um, I would love to actually have NYSERDA. Speak with us about some questions, because NYSERDA is really big, and their goal is to be helpful and to go green, and um. I I think it's, I think it's important to know how this happens, because a lot of what we're talking about is subsidized electricity, so if it wasn't for NYSERDA. This electricity would be way more overpriced than stuff coming from Niagara Mohawk or Niagara Falls or Nysaga, wherever it's being generated with. Large turbines from the waterfall, but also, um. Frank is kind of right here, this, this organization is a company, and they're not a municipality, and they're not a not, um, they might be a not-for-profit, but they're still. They're still going to be benefiting from our uh. And they're not a municipality and they're not a, not, um, they might be a not-for-profit, but they're still, they're still going to be benefiting from our, uh, economic transaction with them. So maybe, uh, the Green Committee can receive this presentation, record the Zoom session and stream it on YouTube. And then we can consume it, uh, at our leisure and still get the information without taking up a whole council meeting on it.
Right. Yeah, it is a time-consuming thing and obviously we, um, use our time pretty fully.
Yeah, and the Green Committee, this is right up the Green Committee's alley. You guys are experts.
Yeah. I tend to, to me that it needed to go to council. That's because it, it seems funny that a, a group of, you know, private citizens would, would be the ones to say, yeah, let's, let's have electric bills in Geneva.
Well,
you know.
I, I hear you. And we, we just heard how beneficial from the county executives, how beneficial the committee system might actually be. So I would say let's empower the Green Committee and then you can bring that report to council. And that's how it gets to council through your summary report. And we can, and if we have questions, we can actually watch the YouTube content if we have any questions or we, I'm sure there'll be a contact.
Yeah, I think I, I do need to talk to Sage too, that make sure to, you know, I, I thought this would be a vote kind of thing. I mean, it seems pretty radical to me to just have, have a, a committee, you know, who's not a committee. Those county committees are made up of supervisors too. This is just a committee, I'm just a liaison. I'm not even really supposed to be a participant. I, I, I just thought it was a city council type of
Committee, Council Regan, the committee, um, the Green Committee would bring it to city council for adoption. Whether it's a local law or an ordinance, I'm not sure. And just to chime in real quick, a couple of years ago, we had a presentation, uh, from someone looking to do this and it, it is a good program. The, the benefit or the lack of benefit from the city side at the time was our public utility gross receipts tax was gonna take a pretty large hit. Uh, in order for this to happen, we get around a hundred ten, a hundred fifteen thousand dollars a year from that. Um, so just, that's something that, that I would look at from the financial side, but, um, you know, I think after the presentation, I could ask that question or maybe during that, so.
Can I, can I just chime in because I've gotta go? And I, I, um, I would have to agree. I don't, I don't, first of all, it's not just the counselor's time that's gonna take up, it's gonna take up staff time. And we're, we want the staff to have some, you know, some priorities. So we can't just keep giving, throwing things on their, you know, over the transom at them and say, well, now you gotta send out letters and all this. I, I, I think we gotta stay focused on, on stuff. And I'm all about all this green energy stuff. My clients buy it and everything else, but I just don't think this is a real big win for us. And just to set the record straight on the NYSERDA, the, the, the role that you think that they played there, uh, Bill isn't true. Okay? Uh, they, they don't, they don't Rates low. They're actually raising rates because what they're doing is they are, they are grubstaking all these solar and wind projects all over the state. And they're putting adders on our delivery bills. And those adders are RPS, Renewable Portfolio Standards, SREC one, SREC two, zero pollution credits, the energy standards. That's all NYSERDA stuff.
I think, I think our city comptroller gave us some, some of the best advice here. Okay. Great discussion. Thank you, Council Regan, for bringing that forward. I look forward to future discussions and I really, I really want to refer to staff, especially Adam, to be able to understand the benefits that it will bring to the city. That would be important. I need a motion to adjourn.